Good evening, welcome to the Wairega City Council Meeting. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please sit. Okay, we've got a pretty full agenda tonight. This is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium at all times. State your name and mailing address so that the city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments, or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Do we have any public comments at this time? Good evening.
You know if I show up, it's gonna happen.
Public comment, absolutely, thank you Pastor John.
I have just been, oh, my name is John Krueger, and I live at 106 Monte Air Drive, Montague, California, 96064. I've just been through probably the most challenging six weeks of my life. And fortunately, at night I say, John, there's nothing you can do about this. In the next eight hours, go to sleep. So, as I thought about the things I'm involved in, the Serenity Prayer came to mind. Grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change. The courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. I meant that part of trying to be wise, to know the difference of what I can change and what I can't. And I looked it up to see for sure who wrote it, and there's a controversy about who wrote the Serenity Prayer. But, I have another statement, that there's no controversy about who wrote it. The person who wrote it is Saint John. Who is Saint John? Well, those of you that know the Bible a little bit, you know, he has three favorite disciples, or closest disciples were Peter, James, and John. And John was the only one that lived and died a natural death. And so, he, um... You just raise your hand when I'm two minutes in, two minutes ago, okay? Because, I don't know if you know any pastors, they tend to talk. Okay, now, one of the things that John said was when he was an old man, because he, he got up, they said, "John, won't you say something?" He got up and said, "Love one another, love one another, love one another." And they said, "Isn't it too bad that John has gone off the deep end?" And the guy next to him said, "No, he just knows what's important." And so, this is written by John, and it's in First John. "If anyone has material possessions and sees his brother in need but has no pity on him, how can the love of God be in him?" And so, that's why, I guess, God has called me to do something with the homeless. Now, what do I want to say to the council tonight? I would like you to put Beacon of Hope's Challenges and the Homeless Situations on your January 2 agenda, please, so that we can talk about it. And why do I want to talk about it? Because we're at the point where we may need to ask you for a temporary, an emergency temporary permit to do some things that are not normally done. And what, you probably wonder what they would do. Probably putting vehicles in vehicles, or shed maybe in places that did not ordinarily allow. But it would be on M1 property, okay? And the owner of the property would not be the least bit upset since we were...
You own it.
So if you would put that on the agenda, and who knows? It's two weeks, what can happen? And just, I also want to mention our thanks for Wairega United Methodist Church, who is accepting our homeless people on Monday and Tuesday nights. Yeah, Monday and Tuesday. And would that, a few more churches would just take us for one night. We're extremely responsible, and I know that you don't think homeless people are responsible, but Beacon of Hope is. She looks at the clock and I'm done.
No, I'm looking at the calendar, because the second doesn't sound right.
It's, our first meeting is at the 18th.
Eighteenth, right.
Oh, I should've said the fourth.
Yes.
Well, it's not, it's being canceled, or will be canceled.
Yes, that, that meeting is canceled.
You're just stepping in?
The next meeting is January 18th.
Would you put it on for January 18th? And then I only have to ask for two months, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And it's not that I don't enjoy your other business, but I have a lot.
Thank you Pastor John.
Tell them we need some details with the agenda items.
Oh yeah, there will be, have, need to be details with that, so you can work with staff on that.
Okay, so, well by this, you want to know what I would like to discuss?
Well, not right this minute, but...
I understand, but it's not due till when you need it?
Two weeks.
Ten days before the meeting.
Sure, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you Pastor John, good night.
You guys are the best. At least the best council we have in Wairega.
And Merry, and Merry Christmas. Okay, do we have any other comments at this time? Okay, we'll go on to Discussion Possible Action Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, Approval Ratification of Payments Issued From December 8th Through December 21st, 2017. B, Approval of Minutes of the Meeting Held December 7th, 2017. C, Adopt Resolution Recognizing The City of Wairega's 2018 Contribution To Employees Healthcare...
You're done.
You're done.
I'm done. I think that was for Pastor John, but, okay. Healthcare costs through the IRS Section 125 Cafeteria Plan. D, Adopt Resolution Approving The Updated 2017-2018 Salary Schedule For Part-Time Employees. E, Adopt Resolution Approving Requests Associated With A Special Event Known As The Chris Lopez Classic To Be Held June 16th, 2018. And F Is Waive Full Text Reading All Ordinances On The Agenda. Ordinances Shall Be Introduced And Adopted By Title Only. What are the wishes of the council?
I'd like to remove one E.
Okay, removing item E, any others? I would accept a motion.
I'll move that we accept as presented A, B, C, D, F.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. To approve item 1, A, B, C, D, and F. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item E, Adopt Resolution Approving Requests Associated With A Special Event Known As The Chris Lopez Classic To Be Held June 16th, 2018. Councilmember Shadsky?
Yeah, what I'm seeing here is that it's saying it's a cross-country bike race, and it's been a cross-country run that I've done several times, so there's an error in the first page.
It's a run, right.
That's why, I just want to make sure that when we approve it, it's for the cross-country, because it's a benefit for the Wairega cross-country team.
Is there anyone here on that item? I would like to pull that item and put it on the next agenda. Since it doesn't come up until June, why don't we just pull it and then we can, and I would...
Her letter, her letter that accompanies it states race, doesn't state bike race. Cross-country runner.
You could've just snuck in the word bike.
Yeah. We can approve it.
Yeah, I don't think we need it.
Yeah.
Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Chris Lopez Classic for a cross-country run.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I would just like to say, for the benefit of the public, that if you have an item on the agenda, it really helps if there's someone in the audience that can present it and answer questions. Thank you. Okay, item number two. Discussion Possible Action Approval Of Wairega Volunteer Fire Department Elected Officers For 2018-2019. I see we have the chief here and some of the firemen. Would you like to? Are you gonna present this, or is this, oh, Steve Baker. Steve, are you a volunteer fireman?
Not in the sense of the word that these guys are.
Yeah, yeah, you put out different kind of fires.
I will say that, I just want to point, we do have people in the audience for this.
I see that.
On a, every other year, the fire department elects officers. Those officers are subject to approval by the city council. I've received a letter from the secretary indicating the appointments. So, so what we're asking you for tonight are to approve the appointment of chief, which would be Jerry Lemos, first assistant chief, which is Jason Suter, and Mike Mallory is secretary treasurer. And if you have any questions for them, two out of three are in the audience.
Yeah, Mike has been under the weather this week, so I haven't heard back from him. He's probably not been able to, not here yet, he's always very wrong.
Uh, Mike, oh yeah, Mallory, yeah, he had surgery.
I need to abstain.
That's right, you do. Do you have to leave the room?
No, I'm staying, I'm a lot to miss.
I don't want to disapprove.
I don't think you do need to abstain.
Okay, are there any questions on this?
No.
I, I would like to, to salute all of you that, that volunteer and give your time. We certainly appreciate all that you do for this town. Okay, I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the elected officers for the Wairega Volunteer Fire Department.
As presented.
Second.
Okay, if I could just have one correction. The one that I have says vacant for first assistant chief. So, we would insert Jason Suter in there, right?
That's correct. There's a formality when there was not a nomination made, because our bylaws state that he cannot succeed himself in the position of first assistant. And the bylaws allow for a different process, which is chief declaring vacancy and then going through that process of nominating myself, appointing him, and then membership approved.
So, do the motion maker and the second agree? Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to accept the officers, including Jason Suter as first assistant chief, as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With one abstention. Okay, motion carries, thank you. And by the way, I'd like to say thank you to all of you for a wonderful dinner last Saturday night. You guys did a great job at the fireman's dinner. We really, really appreciated it, it was really nice, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Discussion Possible Action Approval Of Appointment, Jim, excuse me, Tim Pope to the Volunteer, Wairega Volunteer Fire Department. Yes, so, any comments?
Chief, if you could just sort of walk up to the podium that way.
That'd be great. And maybe have Tim come by, too. You can't vote on this one, yeah.
I present to you Mr. Tim Pope this evening. He's been voted in by the department. Tim was a member years ago when I first arrived back in 94 and he stayed, I think, till 97, 98?
01.
01. So, Tim's very familiar with how we operate. We see each other periodically in the community, so he's kept track of what's going on. And as soon as he knew that we were needing volunteers, he stepped back up. So, I'm really grateful, because he's got years of experience and will be a great asset to our department. So, I recommend his approval highly.
Excellent. Great, that sounds great. Thank you very much for volunteering again, we really appreciate it.
It's my pleasure to be able to join back in the community.
Great. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Tim Pope to the Wairega Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay.
I guess I'll second it then.
And a second, okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to do a swearing in at this point?
I can do it now or do it later.
Let's do it now, let's put him on the spot.
I think we should do it right now.
Thirteen years that young lady's been cussing at me.
He's gotta do a little song and dance though, too.
I think we should do it now before he changes his mind.
Yes. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which...
The duties upon which.
I am about to enter...
I'm about to enter.
As a member of the Wairega Volunteer Fire Department.
As a member of the Wairega Volunteer Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Excellent, yes, sign in, please.
I joined the army again.
Are there any watching the hands?
Yes.
See you out there.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back, too.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, that's exciting. And I understand you have some more people lined up that are looking at volunteering.
That's affirmative. We have, in fact, I'll just read you the latest, because Renee did text me the latest information, and it's pretty encouraging. We've had a lot of interest since October.
Good.
So, since October 14, volunteer fire inquiries regarding potential membership. Three recent within the last two weeks. Five applications returned. Three men, three folks were voted in by the fire department, Mr. Pope, and then two others, which are in the process of getting their other requirements completed. And once that's done, we'll be bringing them before you for approval at that time. And I've been getting calls pretty regular, so we've had, we're hoping, we're hoping, keep our fingers crossed, that by, you know, first of the year, shortly thereafter, that we'll have, you know, a good six or seven people that are, you know, ready to go. By February, a couple more. So, going into fire season, it's, you know, there's no stopping. There's all the things that go with winter weather and everything else that we need the people for, so. We're hoping sooner rather than later, so we have to kind of, it's a process to get through it.
To get them trained, right.
But, the, the interest is there, so we're encouraging that all we can.
That's wonderful, you've done a great job of advertising, complete with a sign across the front of the fire building, the fire department.
Yeah, that's helped. In fact, I sat down with Dave Smith of the newspaper today, and Danielle Jester, and while we're sitting there, Mr. Smith said, "I'd like an application, too."
That's wonderful.
And he's young.
Made my day. Well, anytime you get people that are interested, and you're, you're looking for young people to get interested and serve, it's, it's a huge weight off your shoulders, because, you know, we're at that, we're at that point where we, we have to move, move fast, so. Thank you for all your help in that regard, too.
Right.
Steve and all the staff have been, Renee's been great, so.
That's good, well, thank you for all your good work.
We appreciate it. It's miles to go before we sleep type thing.
But you're on your way, so that's good. It's great, and I think the next item is...
Can I, can I interject as a public comment?
Sure.
So, so this is good news. Yeah, I should go up here, this is good news. And, but I'll, I'll have you note that, that unless I'm mistaken, other than Mr. Pope, everyone else is a newbie. And so, you know, when you're new on the department, you don't go, you're not, not first engine. In fact, you're not even out on second engine until you're about six months in. We don't send them to, you know, it's not like they go to COS, to Fire Academy or anything. I mean, it's, it's, it's what, it's what we do in-house. And until these guys are comfortable, they're not doing anything where they're gonna put themselves or anyone else in danger. So, although this is promising, this is, this is, this is like a seed that's gonna take a year to germinate. So, we're still looking at, at that consultant.
Right.
Sorry, Chief.
It's fine, no, I...
Throw that in there, so they understand, you know, it's like, hey, we're not done.
And, and they have six months probation that they have to get through, which, you know, it's not just having a warm body, so to speak, for lack of a better term. It's, we need individuals, number one, that are interested, and then we kind of mold them and shape them into firefighters that we want them to be, so. Yeah, it was a good point, though, that's, you're exactly right on the money.
It takes, okay, well, good job, Chief. All right, now, the next item also has to do with you, but, city manager Steve Baker. Discussion Possible Action, Authorized Purchase And Outfitting Of The Fire Department Rescue Truck.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I'll just talk briefly about what we're proposing purchasing, which is a Ford F-250 Crew Cab, four by four from Wairega Motors, which is about $38,000, and then another $15,000 worth of installed equipment on the rig. What I'd like the chief to do is to kind of briefly discuss why this particular vehicle and how this fits into the overall strategy, because I don't think that you as a council, at least not all of you, have heard that before.
The voting portion right now. Sometime ago, the department had, there was talk about, well, what are we gonna do for our next, our next go-round for the Major H vehicle or apparatus purchase? And we've had issues with the rescue in terms of the number of medicals that it runs on, as you know. We've been talking to you for months now about what that is. Cold starts, it's hard on the equipment, and we purchased that particular unit with the large box on the back, so it would house the cascade system, which is large, so we could refill air bottles and so forth at scene. We no longer have that need, and it's kind of outlived that, its usefulness in that regard. And it's taken, it's taken a lot of abuse in the years we've had it. And I think that's been 12, 13 years.
Is that about right, Dave?
Roughly. So, having said that, we determined that it would be wise to look at another option, which in this case was the Crew Cab that Steve mentioned. And it'd be gasoline instead of diesel, which is, you know, much, much better that way as far as the cold starts go. And it'll just be one to run the medical aids, and it'll still house, you know, four people, or more, four to five people. And we'll have it outfitted mainly for that, and then we'll have, one of our other apparatus will become our, our rescue vehicle with jaws and all the tools we need for those types of operations.
Oh, that's part of the $15,000? You said in addition approximately $15,240?
No, that would be, that would be to outfit the vehicle with the, this new pickup with what we need for, you know, our day-to-day operations, running medicals and, you know, keeping the gear in the back, you know, you have the canopy and the rollout box and everything else. So, it includes light bars, radios, flashlights. Yep, exactly. Everything to, to outfit it, we need to respond to emergencies. The base price on the pickup is just like a pickup that you can get down to a Ford dealership and drive off the lot. We have to take it and add radios and light bars, decals, and all the additional equipment. And of course, you put fire on any, on the end of anything, and the price jumps up. But, but Tim, Tim is very skillful in finding, you know, those that are good vendors that have good prices, so what you see before you is pretty conservative.
Great, Tim's tough, okay.
And there is a breakdown of those costs, I can't guarantee they'll know what everything is. For example, there's something called a skirt, a skirt kit.
A what, a skirt?
Skirt kit.
Which I'm sure has to do with the, anyway, it's a good thing, but it just sounds funny when it comes to others.
The skirt kit, is it, yeah.
I...
My skirts are not that expensive.
I'm not sure what that is either, to be honest.
It's important to just know that Tim knows how to install a skirt kit on a fire.
And I'm sorry, he couldn't, he's out of town, I wasn't able to be here either. I could take you back on real quick to what Jerry was talking about as far as the...
Come on down, come on down. Come on down, Jason.
The aim for this vehicle is, one, to downsize, because we run upwards of 900 medical calls a year. So, get rid of the diesel engine, go with the gas motor, so it's a little easier on cold starts to just jump in and stick your foot in and go.
Oh, yeah.
We don't have time to warm them up and, and get everything rolling that way. Another reason for the downsizing is maneuverability. Anybody who has no special license to drive it, not with the one that we have now, you need a special license to drive it. But, it's big, it's bulky, it doesn't turn well. You get into tight driveways and other parts of the residential community, it's tough to maneuver. So, by downsizing all that, pulling a lot of the equipment off, that we don't need to be totting around town every time we go to stubbed toe or a heart attack. This will allow us to, one, assess what we need to keep. Stuff that's outdated, we can get rid of, stuff that we don't utilize, or the tactics as far as the way that equipment was designed in the past. We can utilize different tools to do the same job. So, a lot of this stuff, we can actually get rid of, that we don't have to carry it anymore. So, it gave us a good opportunity to tweak what we're using some of our apparatus for, and make a decent purchase that will be functional for what we needed to do. So, we've got now two pieces of equipment. One specifically for running medical aids. The second one will be tasked with running vehicle accidents on the freeway, so now we don't have to take a $600,000 piece of equipment out on the freeway. We can take a $100,000 piece of equipment out on the freeway and still utilize, or still get the same goal accomplished with all the tools. It has water, so we can, if there's small fires, we can put fire out. And that's where the rescue truck that we originally or currently have, doesn't have that capability. So, we can take one piece of equipment out versus two. So, we've just kind of restructured stuff a little bit, so.
Okay, great, good to know.
Nice.
Good to know. Okay, any other questions from the council? Oh, that's right, you have to recuse yourself.
I have to abstain again, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
This is not a habit.
Any other, any other questions for the chief? No, then I would entertain a motion. Anyone?
I will make a motion that we approve the vehicle, yeah, let's see. Outfitting the, outfitting the fire department rescue truck.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all in favor, except for one, one abstention, okay.
No help, Rob.
It's getting, it's getting to be a habit.
Not true, no, Rob.
Okay, all right, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll see you soon with some more recruits.
Oh, that sounds great, great, thank you, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time now for the public hearing. So, those of you that are here, this is a hearing to adopt a resolution issuing a certificate? No, that's the wrong one. Nope, so it's five, public hearing. Okay, of, of public convenience and necessity for a taxi cab operation pursuant to Wairega Municipal Code Section 5.08. So, I think that Gerald Overstreet is here tonight. Would you like to present him?
Hannah Mayer.
Oh, do I have to do that?
You have to open the public hearing and announce.
Okay, excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay, I hereby open the public hearing. Then we will announce that the record will show that this, from the city, that we received public comment from Melissa Wright of Mel's Wairega Taxi in opposition to the application for certificate of public necessity for taxi cab operation. And I'll read that for you, it's very short. "December 21st, 2017, for consideration in the matter of the Overstreets' application for certificate of public necessity for taxi cab operation within the city limits of Wairega, period. There is no need for the city to license another taxi in Wairega. There are two licensed taxi cabs in the city at present. There is already sufficient competition within the city and county due to ride-sharing services, mainly Uber and Lyft," which I did not know was in the city, I don't think it is. And she says, "Thank you," Melissa Wright of Mel's Wairega Taxi. I would also like to note that there are not two taxi cabs, right? There's only one. So, now, would you like to make your presentation, Gerald?
Yeah, I'm Gerald Overstreet, 4417 Pruitt Drive, Wairega, California, 96097. If you have you know us, we own Roadhouse Restaurant, just over the yogurt shop. We have this minor street sports bar, which I've been involved in for three years. Reason I wanted to bring this in is because, like I said, we've offered transportation even at the Roadhouse right now since January, because of trying to get a cab to and from. We offer free transportation from our, any RV park, any, any hotel, to our restaurant and back. When I came into town three years ago, dealing with the sports bar, my concerns were not being able to get a taxi for people that have been drinking or, or even picking things up. I went and talked to people at this time about bringing a vehicle in, which I brought in a 15-passenger van and offered free transportation. So, I could get, if people came in, I picked them up from home, brought them to our establishment, and took them back home free of charge. Because obviously, you keep cutting down on any DUIs, safety of the public, and stuff like that, since, like I said, we've been involved in that before. In the times that we've called to get a taxi, you may get one, you may not get one. And we've even had that experience even at our restaurant, where someone's came from a hotel, not knowing that we offer free transportation, and he had been stuck there listening to the van, And he had been stuck there listening to the van, had a few drink, had a few drinks, could never get the taxi back to get back home. And then Heidi was bartending at a time, she says, no, we offer free transportation. I didn't know that. So we gave him back, you know, right back to the hotel at that time. I notified the front office, say, hey, we have free transportation. Well, we didn't know that, even though it's in every book, you know, the hotel guides, we put that in. With the casino coming up, I think there's definitely a need for reliable taxis. And I believe there's only one licensed driver in this town. And I believe this taxi company, as I said, I've heard there's two or three people driving for that cab company that are not licensed through the police department. What you need to have a taxi cab certificate. Because I deal with the best western, no, we have a couple of people picking people up. As far as I know, there's only one licensed taxi cab driver in the town. Well, how do you have two or three? To me, that's, you know, that putting them at risk also. Because like I said, and the other thing is bringing things in, and I was talking to the chief, I went to him a couple of weeks ago and just kind of told him, you know, I always talk to him about things that's going on in town. And I think, like I said, this town definitely needs a, and I will bring in as many as cars if we need necessarily or vehicles, especially with the casino going, because they're not sure what they want to do right now. Because they're talking with best question about, best question buying a vehicle and transporting people. It's like I told them, it's like, you know, the casino's coming in, you shouldn't be getting them there. They should be responsible for getting the people to the casino. And they're talking about buying a vehicle also. And maybe one van, which I do have, and I have cars. And if I need to bring in five or six cars, I will bring in five or six cars. But we definitely need something that's twenty-four hours in this town. You know, things like that. So that's where I'm at on this thing, is be able to make a successful business here, bring in something back to the public. That if you are, you know, setting it home and you need to get the doctor or something like that, then you can call us and get you there rather than calling an ambulance. It's twelve or thirteen hundred dollars to go through four miles. And the same thing with, you know, we have several bars here, and that's something that I had talked to the chief and I'd like to talk to you guys about. If it does get approved, can we get some taxi, taxi cab stands or locations? Because in big cities, you can't just hang outside the building. So can we get some three or four places located across from some of the bars or locations that just uphold with a sign whether there is other multiple companies here to be able to rotate there, you know, at the spots, to make it more liable for us to survive, you know, survive. And like I said, with casino coming, I think it'd be a good asset to the county. And then, like I said, Uber and Lyft, you guys have to approve that.
Absolutely.
And Oregon just approved Uber. To me, if I cannot fulfill those needs and there's complaints that we don't have enough tags and I can't supply enough vehicles, if we need ten or twelve cars, I'll put ten or twelve cars. Do you think we'll need it there? I don't know yet. But I am able to do that. If we bring in a couple of vehicles at this time and we look at business and the casino opening up whenever it opens up, and we need to put more vehicles out there, I would. And like I said, we're within, we're in a small city. I mean, there's nowhere you can't be in five minutes. And getting the rates and getting something that's, that accepts credit cards and that's a legal licensed company, I think is very valuable. Because I think there's some things going on that, you know. And that would, yeah, like I said, if it's approved and then getting with you guys to be able to approve some spots. Because I think that's, like I said, whether it's in front of Rex or my place or even Jolly, something that when people come out and they have been drinking and they, you know, they can get a cab every thirty minutes or forty minutes or even by call, the people would be less likely to drive. If they sit there and have to wait for taxi, they're going to, you know, so they're going, they're getting that car and they're driving. So, and we've all been around that, so.
Okay, thank you, yes. And I see that you have proposed two cars, one's a five passenger, one's a fifteen passenger. That's the van you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Question for the city staff. The idea of having some taxi stops, who would approve that? Do they have to be approved by the city council or the staff can just say these places would work as taxi stops?
Can I honestly say I, I don't know, you know, how that works.
I would guess the planning commission would be there before.
We can investigate that, though. But what we're, what we're looking at tonight is not those.
Right, I understand.
Stops.
Right.
We would need to talk about it and, and see if that made some sense.
So I have a question, if I may.
Certainly.
So, I'm looking at the page that was part of our packet, Wyreka Municipal Code Section 5.08.020. And I'm looking at, I know you don't have this.
Well, I did have it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, well, I don't have it with me, but it does state.
So I'm looking at E three and, nothing personal, okay? I just, I need to do this, so. So I don't, I don't know where, where we're looking at, what kind of liability, proof of insurance, is this a business operated vehicle? Is there proof of insurance that's, that's different for a business operated vehicle? So I don't see where, where that was submitted to us to review. Says the city council shall investigate and consider. And then I don't see where experience of the applicant is also being submitted. So for example, what I would look to is like when I was coaching and driving vans for the high school. I'd, I had to come up with a DMV printout and showing them, you know, five years or however many years of, of a clean record, you know, that I, that I, and, and how many years experienced, I don't know, I don't know that either. I'm sure you can provide all that, I'm just saying.
No, it's in the, it's in the paperwork. I think you guys, when you go through the approval, no felonies, you go through the background check, all that stuff's gone through the police department. To actually get a taxi cab certificate, driver's permit is gone through the police department.
And second.
So someone cannot just walk in.
Go to the chief of police and he actually issues.
Okay, well, I didn't know, I mean, it just says here that, that city council shall investigate and I don't know, I didn't know what that process was. So, so you'd actually do a DMV background check for.
Chief. Thank you, chief.
I believe there's two parts to that. So now I think the order is on the city council to approve it. You're right, I'm part of it. We do our own checks on them and issue the license afterwards.
So your check, does your check include a DMV check?
It will, yes.
Okay. And then along with the felonies or whatever, not to you.
Well, no, they do all the backgrounds. Well, the same thing going back to the insurance. It's like me having rentals in Sacramento, if the insurance gets canceled on my rentals, I get a left. Same thing here, if there's a taxi cab company here, you get a certificate of liability in your office. If it gets canceled for non-payment, you guys get a letter saying, hey, this guy's got insurance is canceled. You get notified, you notified the company, and I don't know if that's happening now or not.
And they'll, and they'll pull it?
Yeah, they'll pull it. You, yeah, you have to have insurance, you know, you have to be, you guys have to protect it, having a liable cab, taxi cab company here. And make sure that we're holding a license, that our drivers are licensed.
Right, so that goes in this next thing. So here's something from Kim Bridwell regarding Mel's Taxi. And it says, and required insurance certificate naming the city of Wyreka as an additional insured. What is, what does that mean? Are we an additional insured?
You can pay for your insurance company to list who it's insuring. And so if you require the taxi cab company to list the city as being an additional insured, the insurance companies are all used to that and they may charge a minor fee for that. But then we are also insured in case we're sued.
Right.
Because the taxi cab gets entrusted.
Okay, so that's what that means, okay. So, and then one final thing is, it doesn't, is Melissa Wright here?
No.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like based on Roadrunner Taxi not, not having renewed or anything, doesn't sound like there are even two in town right now, correct?
Melissa's in town, it's the one.
That's the one that's in town.
But she says here, there's no need for the city to license another taxi in Wyreka. There are two licensed taxi, apparently there's not two.
No, there's not. There's no Uber, there's no Lyft and there's no second cab.
I kind of cringed at the, I kind of cringed at the Uber and Lyft thing because it's someone else's car. I don't know if they, you know, if their kids puke that they just, you know, did they clean the car out? I mean, it's a personal vehicle that's being used in a commercial sense. And I'm not even sure their own insurance is aware of the commercial use. You're talking about doing it upfront.
Yeah, and while the thing is, going back to that statement, look at the things that happened in the United States with Uber and Lyft. And the other thing is, are they required to go through you to have a taxi cab certificate to even drive for them? Most of them are not. You know, so, okay, anybody can go drive a car, I can't just put somebody in my car. If they, like I said, if I have an employee, I can put them in my car without a taxi cab certificate.
Right.
They would go out and get in a wreck.
Yeah.
It's back to my liability, back to insurance, because I should have never let that happen.
Okay, so, so I heard you, you know, like, as you're talking, like, the number of vehicles kind of grew, but.
Right.
So let's say it's two. So I mean, do we, do we investigate the drivers?
Each driver.
Each driver, okay. All right, I'm good.
And the, and the vehicle, like the van itself, fifteen passenger, has to have a Class B license. You cannot haul, basically, right now, we're doing it, it's private, it's not being charged. I can run that vehicle, I can have a employee run that vehicle, so we are not charged. And once you start charging, then that's a different story. But also the vans are charged different. Because cab, you know, it's tag time, you go and there's per, you know, we put three people and you're splitting that fee. But in a van, it's per person situation, and that's where we go back with casinos and things like that. Because you're not going to run a van unless you're picking up multiple people. And that would be, like I said, that goes back to per, person charge.
And there'd be like posted prices and things?
Yeah, yeah, they have to be posted on the side of the vehicle.
Oh, yeah, that's the law, right.
And you guys have to have that in front of us and our insignia with our things like that. You have to know what we're charging and that's got to be, that stuff I've got to turn it to you guys. How much per mile, how much per tag time or whatever in that area, and it's got to be posted.
Well, you're right, and I, I think that it's also the law, you have to have the person posted who's the driver with their picture.
Right on side, yes. And that's what, it's like I said, I'm dealing with, you know, with best western right now. And you've got people picking up, and like I talked to him last week, we've got one licensed driver, we've got multiple people driving cabs right now and there's one licensed driver. So that's still a liability to your city also, so.
Yeah, it is.
And keeping the insurance up, I don't know. I'm pretty well minded, so, I mean, that's why I ask questions and say, hey, what can I do?
Yeah.
But to me, it's pretty awesome.
And if there are Uber and Lyft in our community, we need to know about it because they need to be registered with the city.
Well, they need to be approved. And to me, I would, you know, bringing this company in, I would like to withhold that. Because the thing is, that's going to affect the company here. Number one, you've got to have a pretty new car. Most of the people in this town that do have a pretty newest cars usually not going to be doing it as a taxi.
Right.
And the restriction on that, if they do come into town, then they need to be approved through him.
Right.
To take a company that's not existing now and bring it to this town, taking that gamble and that risk financially to get this thing off the ground and allowing, like I said, allowing another taxi cab company right now, we have one taxi, seventy-five hundred people with a casino open. You know, are we going to need six or eight cars? If we need six or eight cars, I'll bring the cars in as needed. And here we go again, going back to drivers and getting approved through him.
How competitive would your prices be to Uber and Lyft? I mean, we're going to get questions like that.
I mean, you can, I mean, you look at right now, you like Google it and I check the left dog, and I use Uber lots, I got kids in San Diego, I don't rent a car anymore. You know, let it set in hotel at eighty dollars a night. I mean, you go from my house four miles away, it's twelve, thirteen bucks to get into town. If you've got a cab company, I think the one that's here is at three dollar flag time, you know, for three dollars a mile. If there's meters in the car, and the meters need to be there, because you flag it and we'll probably come in at four dollars.
So pretty comparable?
Yeah, I mean, you only said, you go four miles and sixteen bucks, I mean, you know, I mean, so it's going to be pretty, to me, they, you know, it's back and forth of that. And also availability. You know, we've had people drop off and I don't know how they did it at Uber, but you, the city has to prove that to come in. And Oregon just approved Uber, and look, a big organ, our methods.
Metford did, yeah.
So I think what's before the council, my mayor's, is, is this specific thing. But I, I don't know if we're prepared to make an offer that, you know, we're going to keep Uber and Lyft out. That's not part of the thing.
Right, right.
I understand that's a concern of yours.
But that's why I'm here, is because they didn't, like I said, when I came in, because they don't want another business coming in and hurting another business. But at this point, we have one cab, seventy-five hundred people and a casino coming in. So that's the point. If they came into town and say, hey, this cab company can't keep up, they've got twelve cars, we need, we need to come in. And that would be happy to be brought ahead in front of you again, like I'm coming in front of you.
Seventy-eight hundred people now. But close.
And I got part of them in mine.
Okay, what's the wishes of the council? Any further comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution issuing a certificate of public convenience and necessity for a taxi cab operation pursuant to Wyreka Municipal Code Section 5.08.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for all the good information. Okay, item number six. So discussion, possible action, adopt ordinance, number, we've seen this before. Several times, yes. Number eight fifty-one, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Wyreka enacting chapter nine point six oh entitled alcoholic beverages, drinking and open containers in public and finding the adoption of this ordinance to be exempt from CEQA.
Mayor members of the council, I'm tempted to ask one of you to give the staff report.
We've seen this, we've seen this a few times and you're probably sick of it.
However, what this is, is the prohibition of open container except at certain specified areas and for permitted activities or events. So I'd be happy to go through if there's any questions from the audience or from the council.
This, this is the second reading.
This is the second reading.
I think this is the fourth reading.
It's not the time you've seen it.
We may change at that point.
The second proper reading.
Yes, we have, this is the second reading.
And thus note that, that it's the part of the playground area is, is on there, I'll double check that.
Yes. We are good.
That was nice.
It all looks good. I'd like to move we adopt the ordinance enacted, enacted chapter nine point six zero entitled alcoholic beverages, drinking and open containers in public and finding the adoption of this ordinance to be exempt from CEQA.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Finally got that passed, okay.
Thank you, counsel.
I bet you're glad. Okay, okay, city manager, adopt resolution, adopting the twenty eighteen meeting calendar for the city of Wyreka City Council. So all of you have had the opportunity to take a look at this. The first one of the year, it's pretty close to the first of January, which is New Year's. It has been canceled and due to many reasons, including staff. And then the next meeting, of course, it goes on down the list. And the only other one that's canceled then is June seventh. But actually, I had requested the one for July. I don't know if anybody else is going to be here the day after the Fourth of July, but I won't.
Well, who wanted June seventh canceled and why?
I didn't.
I didn't.
It says it, it's because that's an eighth grade graduation.
It's graduation.
So, so maybe for councilors that haven't been through this, I thought I'll, I'll have you have, but anyway. What we do is staff looks at the calendar each year and tries to figure out where the conflicts are. For example, there have been some years in the past where the, the county fair is, or the Golden, anyway, you know what I'm talking about.
Siskiyou Golden Fair.
Siskiyou Golden Fair is on, overlapped with the meeting, and so we have council for that purpose. We look at if the holiday messes it up. We also look at where there are big events across the way. Not only do council members and staff have trouble parking, but so do.
Oh, yes, you're right.
And in the past, sometimes there have also been members of council that are supposed to be over there at that, you know, once in a lifetime event, sort of thing. So, so we kind of look at those and we recommend a few that to cancel. January fourth is really because it's so close to the Christmas holiday.
Right.
The staff reports would have to be done tomorrow. And that's not happening at this point. So there aren't any items that we have been told by staff that we need to put on that agenda. So we are recommending canceling that meeting. The Jackson Street School eighth grade graduation is on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen. I don't get that information listed, so I'm always pretty impressed. But that just is not a good night.
Yeah.
The July fourth this year is on a Wednesday. You can speculate as to whether people will be around or, or not.
I won't.
So, right, okay, but so July fifth. So, so sometimes that's been the meeting that we cancel. Sometimes it, sometimes it isn't. I've looked at other cities and there is one thing that I've always sort of said is that if, if you want to plan your summer vacations around the council meeting schedule, we should cancel one of them so that you can do that. Council has not done that in the past. It just, it, it's worked out for me, because I usually take that first week of, of July off anyway.
I think Norm has a comment.
Okay, my comment is about the June seventh meeting. Because you have a meeting May seventeenth and you don't have one till June twenty-first. That's five weeks in between meetings. I think that's way too long. I would propose that we make a meeting on May thirty-first. That would make it three, two weeks and three weeks.
So if I might, these are scheduled meetings by ordinances? So these are set up to happen? Whether that, you can always call a special meeting? Our regular meetings are set by ordinance on these dates. So we can have a special meeting, like we talked about having the second Thursday as special meetings.
There's, there's only a couple of differences and on a special meeting, you can't, for instance, adopt an ordinance because you're looking for public input and the public needs to know when to anticipate. A special meeting can be called on twenty-four hours notice and you can decide to do that whenever you want within the year, so.
So if we couldn't set May thirty-first as a regular meeting?
No.
Not until it got closer.
It's, this is set by ordinance.
But you could set it as a special meeting if you wanted.
Just like we got a special meeting in January twenty.
Yeah.
You're right, there's five Thursdays.
We could have one, if we get to the May seventeenth meeting, it looks like we're gonna have a lot of stuff for the June twenty-first, then we could set up a special meeting.
Maybe on the thirty-first, yes.
Right, yeah, that would be the timetable, it really is.
Good idea.
Yeah, we would, we would probably let you know if we saw it needed in there, or two, rather than trying to fight the traffic on the, on the subject.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with the Jackson Street School graduation, that can get jammed down here.
Yes.
It's when you have to fight the parents for a parking place, it gets pretty, uh, ugly.
So when's the fair this year? Does anyone?
It's not, I've looked, it's, it doesn't affect our meeting day.
It's the next week, it's the eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, I believe.
Okay, great.
I just looked it up.
So that may interfere with, for example, if we schedule workshops every
Right.
Second Thursday, that would interfere with that.
We might skip that one, yeah. Okay. Okay, any other comments? I believe we have, do we have to accept this? Yes, staff recommends adoption of the resolution.
I'm going to motion adopt the resolution of setting the two thousand and eighteen meeting calendar for the city council.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Okay, item number eight. Matt Bray, I see that you're here. Consider a resolution approving the mitigated neg deck, which is this copy, little light reading. Okay, negative declaration and initial study and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Waireka Water Supply and Storage Improvements Project. Mr. Bray.
Mayor, members of council, um, as you may recall, you have seen this before, um, a number of months ago. This is the one that we, we sort of put the cart before the horse, went after the initial study and mitigated negative debt.
Right.
In the hopes that we would receive the grant after the fact, and if we didn't, we were going to pay it with water funds.
Right.
Um, I'll speak to that on the next item, actually. We did put this out for a public hearing, closed on the fourteenth. There were no comments received, and we are just, it was authorized last night by the planning commission. And so we are just looking to approve the resolution approving the mitigated negative debt.
Okay, and did I hear you correctly that the planning commission approved this last night?
They recommended counsel.
They recommended it, okay, good. Okay, any questions of Matt? No? Do I have a motion?
Nice report, though, very nice report.
Yes, very thorough, and lots of, lots of nice maps and.
Pretty pictures.
It was fun to help her out.
Yes, lots of, um, good information.
Lots of information.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution approving mitigated negative declaration and initial study mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Waireka Water Supply and Storage Improvements Project.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the mitigated neg deck as presented, and the initial study, what he said. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Matt. Good job. Okay, I take it that the next one is yours? Okay, so, item number nine. Uh, this is Matt Bray as well. Adopt a resolution accepting proposition one, drinking water planning grant funds in the amount of three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Authorizing the financial director to amend the budget for these funds, and approving a consultant task force with PACE Engineering to provide engineering services with the water supply and storage improvements planning project in the amount of three hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Yes, mayor, and members of council again, um, this is the grant that I alluded to in the previous agenda item. We are looking good on this one, um, for the three hundred and ninety-three thousand. And this, as you will recall, is the design and planning of the Davis Well, the new Shastabelle Water Tank on the south end of town, and the new Lower Humboldt Water Tank, it's also the drinking water implementation grant funds for the construction phase.
Good.
This is just moving forward with Prop one. I know we've confused everybody, I'm confused with Prop one these days.
Yeah.
So many different moving parts with it right now, but, uh, staff and PACE Engineering is chasing every dollar available.
And, and that's my question. Um, so if this says, uh, accepting it, have we been awarded this money, and we need to accept it? Or are we applying for it?
No, we have, we would be authorizing the, uh,
The application?
The application, or it was approved, and so we are eligible for the full three ninety-three.
Oh, great.
So we need the finance director to amend the budget to.
All right, any questions? Yes?
One question I have is, I was looking in this bigger thing, the Davis Well, gonna be constructed at the new police department site. And I'm hoping that you can get this done before the police station opens up. That's seemed to be a conflict if it drags on, because I thought it was gonna drag on further than the opening of the police station, and it might cause some conflict with the construction of rehabilitating it too, so I just wanna make sure that it's not gonna be a conflict.
Okay, I could take a tighter look at that timeline for you and get back with you. We'll council on that.
So would that interfere? The chief's got a comment?
She's in, up to speed on the actual building.
Okay.
Yeah, this has been a topic for discussion for, uh, two, three years. The original intention was to try to get it in before the building was built, but realistically, it may not, it could take up to a number of years for this to come through, so, police department would, uh, continue with its plans, and then it would be torn out and rebuilt. That corner, it's a small corner, um, small corner, would affect three, maybe four parking spaces. And maybe a fence and part of the wall. The, the funds for this bill were included, from what I understand, till we build that.
Oh, okay.
And make it nice.
Okay, so it'd be done right.
You'll have to have a drilling rig parked there for a period of time till they get it down, and then you'll have the actual well. It's just gonna be a separate little building or something like that.
It's a separate building that lays in the corner the chief spoke to, so it is honestly just the, the corner there.
They're trying to make it as far out as possible to, um, to make it look right. But, you know, that was, when we purchased that property, that was something that we really looked into, we didn't, I knew the well was there, we didn't really look into it until I was talking to the water department about it, and they said, you got the well. And so, um, it's been something they've been really excited about for a long time, it could really benefit the city, I have another, another source of water.
Be like a backup well. Emergency, yeah.
Right, and also, one of the things that happened is that, um, I'm trying to think if any of you were on council at that point, there may not have been, but we talked about, trying to obtain money through another source that wasn't city funds in order to do that well, so you were on it, okay.
No.
No. But it makes sense, right.
Right, so, now we're there, so that's good.
Well, I, I support it, I just wanna make sure that this part of it gets done first, because I think this is the most
The police station.
Yeah, but, but this Davis Well get done first before you do the others.
Given, given the timeline, when we're, I'm gonna talk a little bit later, but you already are aware, I'm sure, that the police station is out to bid.
I know.
So, when you look at the timeline for that, that's, that's going first.
Right.
And the Davis Well, realistically, when you're dealing with state funds, it's, we, we look at the timeline, and Matt's gonna be able to do this, and his staff better than I am, but just a gut feel is that when you've got local funds and local control, you can make that thing happen faster than if you've got, uh, state funds, and you've gotta go through that. It's not, it's just process time, so probably, with any luck, the police station will be done before the Davis Well.
We do not want to do anything to slow down the police department.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I wanna slow it down.
And, and, and there, there's comfort in knowing that the, that the funding for this well is actually going to fix the, whatever they do to the police department.
Right, it's funded.
And that's the best protected well in the city.
It will be.
One other point there for you, Councilman Shaski, is the, um, if, if any of you have seen the, the North Well, the booster pump station that we built up on North Street, it's about that size of a project, and we put that in between two homes. And it was not a, it's not much a bigger project than that really, except for the drill rig, and we had a drill rig out there last year for test wells. Granted, there was no one in the building at the time, but it took up a very small footprint.
It's temporary.
It's good.
It's temporary, the drill rig.
Yes.
How much does that well put out?
I would, I don't recall. It's, it's a fair amount of water for an emergency backup well.
Like over a hundred gallons?
Yes.
Three hundred gallons? Three something?
Three hundred? Gallons a minute? Wow.
A lot of water down those old dredger tailings.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's what worries me, it's down a dredger tailing. But that's one of those things, if it's emergency, then people would have to boil.
Correct, correct, emergency backup.
The Shastabelle Water Tank, Shastabelle, that's above, at the south end of town, up above. Um, yeah, that's, I, I would say located.
There's actually two, up above Taylor Avenue.
Yeah.
This project, this planning project is relocating it further up the hill to gain some, some pressure, and upsize the tanks to serve that south end of town. In a more stable manner.
That city property up there?
Yes, we have, we have a spot up on top of the whole Ford.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions? Otherwise, I accept a motion.
Okay, I'll move that we adopt a resolution accepting proposition one, drinking water planning grant funds in the amount of three ninety-three K, authorizing the finance director to amend the budget for these funds, and approving a consultant task order with PACE Engineering to provide engineering services for the water supply and storage improvements planning project in the amount of three ninety-three K.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Okay, item number ten. Discussion, possible action, annual development impact fee report. A, public hearing to solicit public comments regarding the city's intention to adopt a resolution approving updates to the city's capital improvement plan and development impact fee program. And B, discussion, possible action, adopt resolution approving updates to the city's capital improvement plan and development impact fee program. So we open the public hearing at this time, right, Liz? Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's any comments from the public. Don't everybody jump up at once. Okay, there doesn't appear to be any public, uh, comment at this time, so I would bring it back to the council, and city manager?
Reda.
Reda, who's presenting this?
I'll start, and if there's any else comment on the other side, please join me. But this is a annual report to the city council, two, two components here. It's the annual report showing the revenue received from development impact fees, and, um, any allocation of those funds to specific projects, um, that were originally adopted in the, um, development fee impact, um, report in two thousand and six. So, um, the fees that were received, which is in appendix, or attached. Three, thank you.
Attachment three, is that what you said? Okay.
Correct, shows that, um, the fees collected were fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, and of those fees, um, expended were eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. That have been dedicated for the growth component of, um, projects that were developed through the USDA CLP, which had a growth component, and
For water.
Service, for water and wastewater, and we're, or sewer, excuse me, the sewer collection system. Whereas we're debt servicing those for over forty years, and, um, we'll, we're offsetting that for the growth component, because each component of the project had a certain percentage attributable to growth on that. Interest earnings, um, that were earned on the fund balance were two thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. But as of six thirty seventeen, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars remain. At one time, one of the projects that, from the original study, was, of course, the police, um, expand the police area, um, and secure the outdoor area. And the city has flagged part of the public facilities money to augment that as, as needed.
So part of this two hundred and fifty-three thousand?
Of the public facilities money of the two hundred and eighteen thousand.
Oh, the, the one at the top.
Will be augmented for that.
Question on that.
Sure.
Is, is that two hundred and eighteen thousand included in the total reserves for the police station?
It is not.
One point seven million or something?
It is not.
So that's additional money that we could use, don't they?
It's discretionary for that, because there's more than one public facility that the council might, um, choose to allocate on that. But we're just flagging that, um, in the original report, it identified six hundred and ninety thousand need in improvement needs. Granted, this was back in two thousand and six, um, for the police area in the public facilities report.
Okay. Okay.
So that is kind of the report on the, um, fees received and their, um, allocation. And the second component of the report is acknowledging the, um, the project fee that really hasn't changed from the original two thousand and six study, and the, um, capital projects are still identified in attachment one of the report, and we've tried to annotate where, um, some of those projects, they have the, um, strikeout, um, for those components that have been, um, fulfilled either with city resources and or augmentation of the development fees. The, um, development fees never have reached their full potential, and the two, two reasons really why is, is there hasn't been growth, big growth, um, and the fees are at a reduced level, so.
The fees are at half right now, right?
Correct, and there is no recommendation to change the fees at this time. And then, um, historically, there have been some other public works projects, um, and that's in attachment four. And really, the important column there is whether or not there is some growth component to that. And that would be the far right column, and only those that have, um, diff flagged on it would have any consideration of diff on that. And to what percentage would have to be evaluated at contemplation of the project is, is growth component. So I don't expect that.
Looks like there's five that are flagged?
Flagged, and I don't expect it will be on, on construction of these projects. We're looking to basically update this with the completion of several master plans, and then reevaluate the whole scope of the, um, impact fees. Because it needs kind of the updated master plans, we've completed a lot of projects, we're getting new master plans, it's kind of like layering together. And then the rate study, and then with kind of the last layer, last piece of that is redevelopment of our capital projects and a diff, and a diff report on that, so. And the action tonight would be for the council to adopt the resolution approving the development fee impact report and updating the city's capital improvement plan and development impact fee program. And Donna, do you want to add anything to that? He's gone through it.
Very eloquent, and I don't have any questions.
All right, so.
Any, we have one question.
Sure.
Under streets, you've got a little over thirty thousand, almost thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars in streets, in that Indian balance.
Right.
Now, what about if that money gets put toward chip ceiling? Because, uh, I think we're planning, what, about four hundred thousand dollars in chip ceiling with street repairs next year from the measure money?
Normally, the development impact fees are for increasing the, the roadways. So, for example, width or something like that, as opposed to maintenance. So I would not advise, um, using that for chip ceiling?
It actually have to be, it's, it's the component that's associated with the impacts caused by growth.
Correct.
So in norm, they've identified some street projects that it could be, um, attributed to originally, and that's, um, table four, four point five dash one, um, which were in intersection improvements.
So is that that thirty thousand dollars you've got on attachment three for streets, it's thirty thousand, seven ninety-nine, seventy for streets? On attachment three.
That's correct. That, those are the funds that have been approved for these projects.
Okay.
Then it could be from that table, um, four point five dash one, and, or anything attributable to growth.
Okay, so it's basically traffic signals, uh, upgrades, stuff like that.
Right, right.
Okay, any other questions? I would entertain a motion. There's Matt. Don't just jump in.
We, we need two motions, right? Or no?
No, we just need, just the one motion, that's the, the recommended motion, unless you have another motion.
I'll make a motion, it says, uh, the city will adopt a resolution approving updates to the city's capital improvement plan and development impact fee program, and then it says adopt a resolution approving, okay, that's, that's the same thing, okay.
That's A and B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, it's the report out of what we've done with the fees. Right, it's the report out of what we've done with the fees and reaffirming the project list.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept as presented, correct? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eleven. Mr. Baker, Discussion Update Possible Action Siskiyou Homelessness Coalition Point in Time Survey, Continuum of Care Participation. I think that Dwayne and I have some input on this as well. Okay. Mr. Baker.
So, to a great extent, I don't be, I don't expect to be talking much about this, but I did want to mention that obviously two members of the council are participating in this coalition. And the part that I'm looking at is, there's a continuum of care that's involved in this, and the city share of that based on population would be about thirteen hundred bucks. And there is a draft MOU which is tragically not done. Not tragically in the sense that it really needs some work.
Nobody's dying over it.
So, and yeah, no, not that.
Hopefully.
What I was thinking is that if you want to, between the two of you, want to make a report on it, and then when we get down to the bottom on the recommendation, the council may wish to give direction on that thirteen hundred dollars, even though the MOU is not ready for primetime.
This is, this is something that, that Dwayne and I have been working on, and Dwayne has taken a lead role in this, and I would turn it over to you. It's been, it's taken a lot of time and energy for a lot of people in this room. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a matter of great concern. And we do have an important event coming up. And I would agree with Steve that this twelve hundred and ninety-seven is the amount, that's our portion of seventy-five hundred dollars split between the county and all the cities. However, I would like to see us maybe entertain up to a little higher in case there's a few smaller cities that, that can't afford it, or if we could chip in on the four hundred and fifty dollars for the...
Four hundred dollars and fifty cents.
Right, and fifty cents, okay. I'll let you talk about that. Anyway, so it might be like up to as much as two thousand and twenty-five.
How much do you mind it up? Did they just say?
So, we took, we actually took the populace of each city.
Population.
The population of each city and calculated out that because there's an overall fee in, on this, and it's seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it kind of shows on the whole thing.
So, why, why would you want to kick in more if it's the population of each city? It's kind of, they kind of base it on, on what they're...
Correct, but there's like what Mayor was stating on there. There's going to be some people that aren't going to be able to perform their, their obligation of that part of it. And this is what we're going to be hitting and talking to the county about. On January second, we're actually going to the Board of Supervisors and speaking with them on their part of this whole thing, too. Everybody plays a role on this. The overall picture is everybody's going to chip in. And why, by going by the population of this, it breaks it down into a number that is more doable for each population of the city. So, Montague, for example, Montague might not be able to pitch anything.
So, you don't know, though?
We don't know that, no. We're correct. We do not know this.
Up to a certain amount.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I, it may be helpful to talk about the overall strategy for the point in time.
The point in time survey.
And also discuss what the purpose of the continuum of care is.
Right.
Before talking about mine. And if I, if, I know I brought that up first because I said that's my little piece, but we also...
I was going to bring that up last, but thank you for...
Yeah, so erase what I said, let them bring up the other stuff first. We'll deal with the other part last.
Okay, Dwayne, you want to?
So, we'll get started on what this has been involved. We have spent lots of hours in this whole situation trying to address and figure out what the best strategy is for addressing this, the homeless issue. There are so many different avenues on this that there's no easy fix. There's no way that we can actually just say, okay, if we do this one thing, it's going to resolve at all. It's not going to happen. Two, two, excuse me, key elements in this whole thing are, one, the point in time that we're going to be doing. On January twenty-second, we start the point in time. So, it's a survey, basically, to find out how many homeless people are in this area. And we're not talking just Wairika alone. We're talking all of Siskiyou County. The county was supposed to be doing this from day one back years ago and have not been meeting that obligation. When we found out about that happening, we jumped in and said, hey, we need to take care of this. We need to know how many people are homeless in Siskiyou County. So, that, that endeavor alone is huge to try to orchestrate, how, trying to find out how many homeless people are in Siskiyou County is like trying to guess how many drops are in a bucket. It's, it's crazy. I put on tons of events, and this is going to be one of the bigger events I get to put on. And it's going to be challenging. Ed Petches down in Team Shasta, he has, has been orchestrating a lot of this, coming up with the research, trying to find out how to do all these things. Because it's all a new game for all of us. We, nobody really knows how, you know, how it wasn't getting started, why it wasn't getting started, I should say. But now we're orchestrating this, we're getting it done. So, on January twenty-second, we start this point in time count. It continues on through basically January twenty-ninth. So, we have a few days to figure this out, but there's a lot of key elements that are involved in that. You know, we have resource management, or excuse me, resource center, Wairika Resource Center of all over. So, you know, Dunn's Mirror, Truly Lake, all the resource centers. We've got to coordinate that with all these people. County, we have behavioral health involved in that, which is a huge, huge help for us because they can take their numbers and help apply it to this, too, with basically what they already have, the numbers that they have. They can call up these people and find out what true numbers are in that. So, that, that alone is, you would be surprised on how many numbers there is on that alone. So, that's a, that's a key factor there. The next one is the HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System. This system is devised so the people that need services, that need basically clothing, food, whatnot, that are homeless, can get these services. But there also is way we can track that system, too. So, we know that this person is getting this service and this service and this service, and not getting double dipping in a service and denying that service to somebody that truly needs it. So, we can manage that system knowing that people that are getting the services actually deserve those services and are not abusing those services. And that's going to be statewide also. It's actually, it's kind of a west coast thing. There's different systems out there. The system that we're going with is pretty much the west coast. So, it's a huge system to be able to enter this in numbers and the data, to be able to keep track of who is actually out there needing these services and making sure that they're not getting abused. Those two key elements will hopefully, in the future, be able to bring us some funding from the state and hopefully from the federal government to where we can maybe do some, have some programs for people to do, you know, rehabs of some sort, to be able to find affordable housing for people, to, you know, get them the mental health that they need. So, there's, there's a lot of key factors involved in that. But to be able to recognize where those services are, to be able to recognize who needs those things and how many people they are is the first step. And that's what this HMIS system is, is gearing towards. And that's where this funding that we're talking about is actually gearing it towards, too. Any, like if anything else, you start a program, it's not going to be free. And in order to be able to do this, we need to be able to have some funding to be able to keep track of that. I don't know about you or me, but I don't have time to do all the paperwork involved in keeping track of all this. That's what this does. That's what this system pays for.
No, I understand that. I mean, I don't have any problem about that. I'm just wondering, you know, well, it'd be nice to know what cities can afford, and then, and then we can address it at that.
And, and we are, we are actually working on that. We're working with all of them.
Actually, we are going to make this presentation at the Lola meeting. We're going to bring it up, and, and we got some time on the agenda to present it to all the cities because the only cities that have been active on our Siskiyou County Homelessness Coalition are Mount Shasta ourselves and Weed.
Is Weed on? I didn't see a Weed representative on there.
Yeah, they're on there. But it's so important because what we're looking at with this point in time survey, it will establish a number, in other words, it will establish important documentation that is necessary to get the funding for the services from the state as well as from the feds. If we don't have the documentation, if we don't have it properly documented on their forms, then we don't get the funding.
In fact, I even know why you have this nightmare of point in time where everyone has to do it at the same time.
Same game.
Because they can't be in two places at the same time, so you're going to get an accurate reading. I got that, too, yeah.
And it's throughout the whole state.
Yeah.
There are so many elements to this, it's amazing. Like I said, I've put on lots of, lots of events, and this is going to be a huge event to put on.
So, if I understand the mayor correctly, then so basically Weed, Mount Shasta, ourselves, those have been the only ones that are, that even are aware of this, so...
No, not necessarily.
Or that are aware of this, the money?
Um, yeah, probably.
Pretty much.
We're, we're going to be presenting that in January at the Lola meeting in Montague.
And then they'll have to put it on their city agenda.
Right, and we've been working with, Shasta County actually gets all the funding for the north state. And heretofore, all the money has been going to Shasta County and I think only one other county because no one reached out to them. So, Ed Petches, the gentleman that we're working, you remember, he came with Dr. Marv, he actually located these people. He called up and he said, I understand that, you know, that there's some housing that there's funding for that's available, you know, in our county, and we don't know anything about it. And so, what we found out was that there was housing for homeless, that they had excess housing and they were giving it to college students because they didn't think we had enough homeless people. Or not just homeless people, but qualified people.
Qualified, yes.
Qualified, the veterans, as well as, you know, single moms or single dads with kids and, you know, people with special needs.
So, what's your timeline on, on having or meeting this money?
We have to have this by January, before the point in time.
So, before, before anyone, any other city can act on it?
Actually, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than that because we're in startup mode. So, I think there's two timelines. So, let me tell you the reason why it's on the agenda tonight as a number is that, so that when the collected people on the coalition go to Lola, then we can say there's, hopefully, there's support from the Wairika City Council to do this. The, you know, the money. And then the other stuff in terms of startup, it'll probably be closer to February. As I mentioned, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to the MOU to get, so we're, we're trying to move on two, two things at the same time. One is to do the point in time survey and get that done on the only date that it can really be done.
Right.
And then also join the continuum of care so that all of those various agencies are coordinating, and we're trying to bring the money in.
Right, it still doesn't answer the question. When does the seventy-five hundred have to be on the table?
That we have actually time on. The seventy-five hundred dollars we have time on. We have to make a commitment is basically what the mountains do.
Okay, I got it.
So, the seventy-five hundred dollars, I think we actually have to, I got it in my pile of notes.
I think you explained it, though.
Yeah, no, I got it.
It's a little bit later, but I don't, that's why I didn't give you the exact date.
So, we're just, we're saying, hey, we'll support twelve ninety-seven.
Correct. That's all we're asking for, you know, we can actually say...
If we need to do more, we'll, we can address it later.
And, and, and yeah, and by doing this, too, it also shows that we are committed as a city to try to help the situation. And by us being committed as a city, that hopefully will bring the other cities to see, okay, Wairika is really committed to this issue, we need to be committed to this issue, too. And hopefully they'll follow suit. And same with the county, you know, we're, we're going on January second to, to the Board of Supervisors and present this to the Board of Supervisors, too. So, it's, it's going to continue on.
The county has been at the table. Lisa next one is going to make it.
There, we're at fifty-one percent contribution.
One, one out of five members of the Board of Supervisors are aware. We're going to go make the others aware.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
That's not good.
Well, I think it's important that we approve at least the twelve ninety-seven tonight and put it on record that the City of Wairika supports it. So, that'll help you with the county and help you when you present it to Lola. So, if there's not further discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve the point in time survey and that we give twelve ninety-seven for participation in this continuum of care.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second to approve and contribute our portion of twelve ninety-seven. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one more thing. The chief wants to say something because we're really relying upon the chief and Lieutenant Gamache and the police department to help guide us.
Yes.
And keep us safe when we're doing this point in time survey. Because I don't know about the rest of you, I have not been out in the homeless community. I know Dwayne is fearless. I am not.
I was hoping to take a moment to give you a little information on, show you
Great, thank you.
The police department and the Chiefs of Police committee in this arena for quite some years.
Yes.
And a lot of you may not know a lot of this information. So, I thought it would be beneficial to briefly cover it. I'll try to move a little faster. Do you have any questions on the issues?
Oh, timeline. You got a timeline. Good job.
If you have any questions on any of the issues, feel free to stop me because I'll try to come fast. I know I don't want to keep you here too long. But, you know, homelessness has been in Wairika a very long time. Twenty-seven years ago, people living along the creek, they lived there year round. And we've had shootings along the creek twenty-seven years ago. We've had all kinds of issues. As we've spent a little more money in those areas, a lot of those people have moved out. Homelessness in society has changed immensely and affecting most of our communities everywhere. And so, it's affecting everybody, and it's really a hard thing to try to solve. It's almost impossible. Cities are spending upwards of San Francisco, three point one million dollars on it and still haven't got a handle on it. So...
Oakland, too.
Yeah, I mean, we realized this was an issue back in two thousand and fourteen where the Waioka Police Department appointed a homeless liaison officer in two thousand and fourteen. We also came up with some guidelines, some, a tri-fold handout to give the homeless on some resources that's available in our community. So, as time has gone on, there was some money that was coming available through Prop thirty, BSCC funding. The Chiefs of Police got this money for a few years, and it was normally divided between each agency entity to use how they see fit. As the time went on, the state said, hey, you need to use it for groups, different types of functions. So, December fifth, two thousand and sixteen, I got some information on BS, BSCC funding.
What, what does BSCC stand for?
Um, I don't have that. Bureau, you know.
Bureau of Cops.
I can, I can.
I don't know.
The important part is funding.
Yeah, funding, yes, really.
Yeah, I can get that information to you, madam mayor. I'm sorry I didn't have that today.
That's okay.
They sent us some information with guidelines available to use for the Chiefs of Police. This is only available to the Chiefs of Police, not to the county. Not to the county. They get different funds of large buckets of money. This was something Cal Chiefs negotiated for and realigned. So, we received the guidelines December eighth, two thousand and sixteen. December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, I called for a meeting of all the chiefs in Siskiyou County on how to best use this money. We met down in Weed, and we went over different problems that were affecting our communities. It was quite apparent that homelessness was a rising issue that I said someday will bite us all in the butt. And so, we determined that we would use our money to form a homeless liaison group. And so, January fifth, two thousand and seventeen, we had a second meeting to discuss it, formalize it. A vote was called on January thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. And then, the problem was actually finding someone to do the work. Parish Cross with Mount Shasta Police Department said, I have this team, Team Shasta, that's already doing this down in South County. They're willing to expand to the entire county. I said, that's great. He said he would be the fiduciary, the city, Waioka, get some money, we'd give them the money. And of course, there had to be a vote, which, there was a vote called. City of Waioka received the money on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen from the state. January twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen, YPD was requested, requested to send Prop thirty money to Team Shasta. One day after we received the money, we're requesting it to be sent. So, as you can see, this timeline is very fast. We knew that this prop existed. We got on it right away. This money wasn't sitting around in our coffers for very long before it was put to work. February twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, Mayor Jones, Smith, Freeman, and City Manager Baker received an overview and update on Team Shasta emailed forward from Ed Petches. Ed Petches is a man, a very, a good man, that I've worked with many years in different functions when he worked at different jobs throughout the state. And he was willing to take this on as part of Team Shasta. I knew from the moment that he said that. And, uh, he was willing to take this on as part of Team Shasta. I knew from the moment that he said that, we'd be okay. For those of you that have met. March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, uh, they formed, Team Shasta got a consultant and formed a RFP sent out to the mayor and, uh, city manager of Waireca to take a look at. In March of two thou- twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, we did get a claim against the city for throwing away homeless property on private property. Part of the state, Waireca Police Department, worked with city crew and, uh, jail crews in the county. Uh, we cleaned up public property and private property. Private property was a lot easier to clean up, believe it or not, than public property. But we did do on private property. Up until this time, um, and up until this claim, we thought that was a good idea. And then after this claim, we decided it wasn't a very good idea anymore. And so that was, that was stopped at that time. May second, two thousand seventeen, I developed a, uh, one-page sheet for homeless in Waireca with objectives to assist officers in the public for some roles. May twelfth, uh, two thousand seventeen, met with Dr. Marbut in Waireca and went over homeless issues and now was to help him formulate his report. May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, discussions with city staff about the storage of homeless property. It's a huge problem. City spent thousands of dollars and we are starting to spend thousands of dollars on this subject in itself, which I'll get into in just a moment. As a result, city crew will pick up stored homeless property and store it at the city yard. Also a discussion about abandoned motorhomes. So we have a huge problem with abandoned motorhomes, which you may see a few around here. So what happens is they park on private property or public property. If we can tow them, we can. Using all the, these big ones, we have come up with all these reasons to try to tow them. Problem is the tow companies refuse to tow them. The reason being is that they tow them to their yard, it costs them more money than the tow, even if we paid them for the tow. To tear them apart, they have to be taken apart because of all the different materials, fiberglass, the copper lines, this lines, that lines, and they lose big money. They refuse to tow them.
Have you ever tried the CHP model?
And what's that?
They, um, refuse to make calls to wreckers that won't take the ones that they can't make money off of.
Ah.
But we, we, we can suspend them. And we have done that. We've, we had a meeting with them. We've had, I think, two meetings in the past, so. The problem is that all are in the same boat. I don't know if they've banded together or not. We can put them on suspension, but they all say the same thing. So we can do a number of things in this arena. We can create our own city tow company and run it as a city. Or we can designate one tow company. Our meeting code allows us to designate one tow company. And they will get all our toes, but they have to take everything we want. Right now, we do use the CHP model, which is, we have a tow rotation, they have to meet all these guidelines, which is insurance qualifications. They have to post their rates, et cetera, et cetera. We go down a red list, we call them as we have, uh, crashes and toes at night. If there's more than one vehicle, we call them. If they can take two on that one call, they get it. But they're very, they, they listen to the, they listen and see who gets what call, because they get all upset when they get skipped or something like this. And we have skipped them numerous times and put them on, uh, restriction, but it, it's not working. So what has happened is we're towing motorhomes to the city yard. Right now, we have two. We should have got three.
Really?
We're towing them to the city yard. I have motorhomes that are burnt on their wheels, sitting on public streets. We can't leave them. We have motorhomes sitting in public parking lots. I cannot leave them as a public safety issue. They have to be towed somewhere. Matt's not happy about it. Nobody in the city is happy about it, but they have to go somewhere.
There, there was one, uh, over behind, um, uh, where the old Boston Shaft was, that parking lot there. But there were two, that first there was one, broken down there, and then there was a second one, and I've noticed that the, that the one that's operational tows the one that doesn't work.
Right, one guy owns both of them. We just took one from him this week because he had it hooked under railings. And we've been working closely with, uh, the different, uh, businesses throughout town. The, one of the biggest issues, problems is the, um, railings shopping center. The company has just said that they would, they would tow them. Well, there was one sitting out there, you may have seen it for three or four days this week, sitting out there with a roof. We took the guy to jail, he had three or four warrants, and it's a prime opportunity when you take somebody to jail, take, if, if their vehicles, they're gonna be taken. But their problem was issuing the checks. The, their company isn't, um, they have to issue the check before they can tow it. And so they're working on a strategy to try to fix that. So it's a big problem for us. We, we're taking tents, we're taking, uh, dump truck loads, truck loads? Truck loads, on pond truck loads to the city yard now. They have been, we've had, uh, people going through some of that stuff. We've had the direction control at the city yard.
You just store it in the city yard amongst all of the, the trucks and the materials? I mean, what do you do with it? It must take up a lot of room.
Yeah. Yeah, we should create a, uh, area that's enclosed, that's fenced for this. And we've been, I've been looking at prices for that, which would be a whole nother meeting, but I have.
The, the, the county or the cities never formed a vehicle abatement authority, um, to handle that sort of thing?
On pub- private property? These are registered vehicles parked in a pond, private property.
Uh-huh.
If we can tow them, we tow them. For example, the one, we towed one Monday morning, the other one we couldn't tow. If you would have been arrested, how to get, we could have towed it. The property owner in this case was going to tow it, but they couldn't get the, they can't, still can't get a check issued. So it's, it's a problem that we've been working on for, uh, at least a year and a half. And we're still trying to solve it. Maybe I, the, the city attorney seems to have some ideas that maybe we can try to solve it.
How long are you supposed to keep their property?
Hundred and twenty days.
Wow.
And then what?
And then we hope it comes, no, it can be disposed of.
You can, you can dispose it?
Yeah, dispose it, auction it, whatever, yeah.
And we haven't even gotten down to the shopping cart issue.
It's on there too, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a whole nother issue.
One hundred and twenty days come from, is that a state?
It's a municipal code. We don't really, there's other codes that say something different, but the city municipal code, so.
So we can say sixty?
We can change it, but I think it's, um, I wanna say ninety.
Ninety.
Our Lex- our Lexapro manual, we have a manual, department manual, I think it, it's less, but because our municipal code says it's more relevant than municipal.
Well, we can change that. We have a little bit of power here.
Okay.
Yeah, from one twenty to ninety.
Yeah, that'd be worth it. It's a month less.
Something.
Yeah.
And, and we do have a room next to the police department, uh, at the building we rent that, uh, gets filled up with, uh, homeless property also. They won't take it to the jail. So every person goes to jail with their shopping carts, it gets bagged up, put in our facility.
Robbed, you got room in your yard?
So that's just one of many, many, many problems that we have.
Sure, it's, uh, it's the city yard.
It's just a million issues.
A city yard.
But I thought I'd at least, uh, bring them to you. And so, um, yeah. And, and the city yard said they can only hold ten, ten motorhomes. So hopefully we don't fill it up.
So a motorhome is also a hundred and twenty days?
That's probably, they never claim them. We hope they come claiming.
No, but is that, is that part, is that prob- does that come under the hundred and twenty days also?
Because it's a vehicle?
I think there's, that's a lot more complicated because there is a title search that would have to be done on it and try to find the owners, et cetera.
Oh, wow.
Tow yards won't take them, we're taking them, and it's, it's, it's gonna be a big problem at some point.
Cause even if it was a hundred and twenty days, I mean, then what do you do? So now it's ours, then what?
Technically, it's ours. We, we would probably have to dis- disable, dis- dis- assemble.
Dismantle?
Dis- dismantle, I couldn't come up with the word, sorry. Dismantle, uh, and segregate it as we're taking it to the junkyard in different piles.
Wow.
Stuff like that. It's a big problem. They do this with boats too. They just sink them because their, our glasses are worth it. They just sink them in, all over in the lakes.
Well, that's terrible.
They were not worth anything to sell, well, to, to.
They just sink them?
Yeah.
They just sink them, poke homes off?
You know, I just thought of something for the motorhomes.
You wanna vote?
No.
Practice for the fire department.
I wonder if Mr., uh, Pastor Krueger would like to recycle them as little mini homes.
Outside the city limits?
Yeah.
Thank you, Liz.
They're not real pretty. No, no, I was teasing.
We can certainly check into that.
No, no, I was teasing, really.
Um, we did have, uh, June seventh, two thousand seventeen, we had a public meeting, coffee with a cop. This was, uh, you could see it on Waireca News, it's a videotaped. It's quite a lively meeting, um, in which we met with the business owners and the public. We went over a lot of homeless issues, a lot of issues in general. Looking, we threw four arrests right out the window while they were videotaping at the plaza.
That was handy.
Oh, that was going on. Six twelve, two thousand seventeen, homeless recommendations sent to city staff. Um, six, seven eighteen, two thousand seventeen, presentation from Dr. Marbut to the Sig- City of Waireca homeless coalition team, um, on his study. That was in the morning and then the evening, as you recall, when he got his study firsthand to the public, which was.
We had a public meeting here, right.
Seven twenty-five, he published it after with the presentation. Eight one, city manager identified some homeless, uh, issues in Waireca. Eight three, meeting with Mayor Jones Smith Freeman, Councilmember Glenn Kegel, homeless issues in Waireca, including shopping carts, which we'll get into a little bit down here.
Yes.
Eight, eight, two thousand seventeen, meeting with city manager and homeless in Waireca. Eight ten, meeting with Waireca City Manager's office with Waireca lieutenant to discuss and identify issues. Eight fourteen, Waireca, uh, YPD chief notes on Marbut's study, a twenty-seven page report condensed into two pages. I did that for you if you'd like.
Executive summary, right.
Um, ch- chief, eight fourteen, chief creates a letter to private property owners for notification and ways to help homeless address the encampments on their property. This is like a check sheet form sent. Um, the people, we create an internal policy on handling of encampments on private property, encampments on private property, parks and vouchers. That was an internal document created so that my officers and staff know how to deal with this more effectively. Six eighteen, chief created, uh, private property encampment sheet. So this was turned in anytime somebody reports, um, I think we've had over a hundred and four since July, reports of this. Of encampments in different areas, suspe- suspected encampments. And that, uh, that sheet is then forwarded to lieutenant, lieutenant will then, uh, take that on.
A hundred and four.
A lot of more duplicate entries. Yeah, a lot of more duplicate calls. You get about ten or twelve calls on one camp.
Okay.
We get, especially when we did the outreach, public outreach, which I'll get to in just a minute. Eight seventeen, we had a staff meeting with all the supervisors and at the police department on the implementation of the new operating procedures for homelessness and encampments. Eight seventeen, there was also a Team Shasta meeting where the lieutenant attended. Eight twenty-one to eight, nine four, two thousand seventeen, YPD issued four shopping cart tickets and we lodged, I should say lodged, lodges thirty-two shopping carts at the new Waireca Police Department building, which they still are there in the state. Walmart has not picked them up.
You're kidding.
No. I forgot to tell you about that, yeah.
We were lucky that they did come pick up the city manager. We were talking about this very issue. The city manager actually, we made four or five calls. City manager called, left a message and for some reason, the next day they were picked up by Walmart. Not at our facility, at all the other places around town.
But I realized there were some in the station. All I did was I suggested that if they didn't come out and pick up the shopping carts, I was talking to an assistant manager, that we might have to take some, uh, further action to enforce that. And it was probably easier to pick up the shopping carts than to deal with us.
So it seemed to work on the city manager's side. We still have thirty-two in our building.
So has anyone contacted, uh, it's Walmart, right?
Yes.
Has anybody contacted Walmart about these thirty-two? Because I've noticed lately, they've been running short of shopping carts.
Yes.
They have to do more runs.
I guess we'll wait till they run out before they can get them.
They don't have one truck that can get them all. We said we'd push them all out for them.
Yeah, but could somebody call them and let them know this is their season? That's great.
They, you, you, getting through to the right person's side.
Well, I saw, um, the manager, what's his name?
Baker.
Landing Chamber. I see him all the time.
Landon, I, I, yeah, I saw him at the shop with a cop and I wish I had known at that time. I would have suggested that perhaps they should pick up their thirty-two shopping carts.
Well, they're, they're holding our space ransom.
Oh, my.
Um, we, on, um, eight twenty-five, open container ordinance, you know, this could be in correlation to homeless, I'm not sure, but. Eight twenty-two, I think I got some dates mixed around there. We developed a tri-fold handout, uh, which I have here tonight. There's about fifty of them here.
Okay.
If I copy them, I can get them for you.
Good.
On, on various issues. Lost my spot.
Tri-fold and then planned implementation, right. Eight twenty-nine.
Eight twenty-nine?
Yeah, you, you typed up some procedures and then, uh, modified the open container ordinance.
Yep, we modified the open container ordinance, um, city staff. And we took, nine twelve, public outreach by use of Facebook. So this was really tremendous, had about thirteen thousand three hundred hits. Uh, all positive comments from the public on this procedure. Um, at that time, we had cleaned up seven encampments between when we started this with my staff and that date. Over the next week or two, we handed out about three to four hundred tri-fold guides. We went out to block downtown and all the businesses handing these out. And we had, uh, people coming in asking for stacks twenty-five at that time. Uh, good, good, good information for the public. Uh, we, city staff and, uh, work on the modification of the ordinance. Nine twenty-eight, two thousand seventeen, ten twenty, ten five, two thousand seventeen, reviewed by city council and sent back for modifications. Eleven six, review of open container ordinance with the city attorney. Eleven eight, meeting with Siskiyou County, use of place for review about the homeless encampments and voucher system, going over what we're doing. We shared our, um, there had been no city that developed any procedures or policies. We shared all ours with them. Mount Shasta has been using some of those. Uh, eleven sixteen, Waireca City Council review of open container ordinance. Seven, or twelve seven, council reviews open container ordinance first reading. Twelve, twelve eleven, two, two officers attended the homeless point in time study. Really interesting, um, the question's gonna be used, et cetera. Uh, they were discussing about, uh, kicking tents and, not kicking them, but going to the tents at seven o'clock in the morning. We, we suggested maybe a later time, only because a lot of people don't, when it's nineteen degrees up, they don't come out of their tent to talk to you at that time in the morning. Which might be a little better to go a little later in the day. So there was a lot of information exchange at that meeting. And hopefully, um, they'll take a look at that.
Yeah, Dave's been really good. Gamache was awesome. Him and I got to sit down after that and, and talk about some of the encampments and stuff like that. Really knowledgeable. He informed me of a couple of encampments that I didn't even know about, so that was good.
Oh, yeah, you, yeah, you can't really see them, but we do have a bunch of them, as you probably looked at the binder, on private property. Yeah, there's none that we know of right now on public property. There may be one that we're just gonna report.
Uh, there, I don't know if it's private or not, but on the Waireca Overland Trailhead, if you go up the, north on the trail and right where it goes underneath five, if you look to the right on the hill, there's two tents and a teepee.
So on the hill, that's.
Yeah, we know about that. That's a private property.
That's private property, yeah.
And, and the owners have been notified.
Okay.
And so, um, we still continue to follow our guidelines, working with the property owners, letting them know of the five different things. It could, it could be trespassing, homeless people on their property, fire hazard, um, hazardous, not hazardous material, and, um.
Oh, yes, I would say, because they have no.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
And that's for public health issues, but they're noti- they're notified and those boxes are checked and, um, they're put on formal notice.
Awesome.
And then hopefully.
We have a mechanism to charge a private property owner once they've been notified that there are people living on their property, that if there is a fire and it spreads, that, that they're gonna be, we're gonna bill them for all of that?
Well, I think at some point, uh, they'll be referred to the city for public nuisance, and I think that could be part of it.
You know, I think that's important because if Cal Fire helps with that, then we're charged. So we should pass that on.
I agree one hundred percent. And that was one of the reasons why we would put fire danger on those sheets, so the property owners notified. Lieutenant keeps a running log with who's been notified and when. And so if something were to happen after that time, especially after we've had a couple of fires on, uh, in the department.
So I s- I see Steve writing, so, sounds like you're gonna whip that one up.
It's written eleven.
See if we have something on the books already, if we need to modify something, or?
Oh, I'm sure I'll have to ask some questions.
What about people's homeowner insurance?
Say it again.
Um, having homeless people on their private property, would that not make their homeowner, owner insurance go up fine?
I don't know. If it's not.
Yes, it's not.
Yeah.
So that's actually a good, a good issue that you bring up with. And actually, I've discussed that, that there's gotta be a way that we can actually discuss that with the property owners and make them aware that that could be a liability issue on their insurance, correct?
If they have insurance, I mean, if it's just land, it's on their right.
On twelve, twelve, two thousand seventeen, Ed Petches reached out for assistance. We're hoping to have two to three persons, ununiformed, um,
Yes.
With the, the counters, um, in case there are any problems. Twelve twelve.
Thank you.
Coalition. Uh, Siskiyou Homeless Coalition and Continuum of Care, mem- memorandum of understanding proposal was forwarded to the mayor, Jones Smith Freeman and city manager for review, which it sounds like you may have had that before, I don't remember.
Yeah, we had it tonight.
And lieutenant attended another point in time survey and they did discuss in length some of the issues of revolving that. Council member.
It's kept you, it's kept you busy, hasn't it?
And twelve-twenty-one, tonight, we did approve the open container ordinance.
Yes.
I have to add that in.
So please fill in the blank, yeah.
Fill in the blank.
So overall, we've spent a little bit of time on this and it means a lot to us to do something. It's a, it's an issue affecting all of us and.
Thank you.
Business owners are upset.
Yep.
They have been less upset since there hasn't been, I don't think we've had one call for service since December first downtown.
Really?
Wow.
Good. That's good to know, that's after the.
Supervisor told me that this morning.
That's good.
One call on homeless since December first.
So the change of location.
That's when, yeah, the change in location.
That's great.
So there, I would say there's a correlation to wherever there's, will be homeless shelters, the calls of service will be really increased. That's something we can consider for the future.
I saw on twelve-eleven, the animal control officers.
Yes.
A lot of them do have dogs.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a whole other problem that we deal with with them, because you have to be a resident of Waireka to have a license.
Right, and approachability on the survey, so y'all are researching all that.
But there's, there's some new Senate bills, but we as police have to be very careful contacting somebody because of their statute in society. And so because somebody is homeless is not a reason, I think a thousand dollar contact fine on the agency.
Really?
Yes.
That's profiling?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
And so we have to be very careful.
Thank you for the, all of the information. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to, thanks. Thanks to Gamash too, for letting us know.
Yes.
That's, it was really nice for him to show up and it was real important to us that he was there and was helping us with the situation. It's been very informative, having him there and showing us, like I said, showing me some of the camp encampments that I didn't even know about. So I've been trying to keep up on this and he was able to inform me on some of them that I didn't even know about, so that was good.
Yeah, and he is the most knowledgeable since he's been dealing with it the longest. But up until two thousand fourteen, there was no such position, best practice for that, to have a homeless liaison option. So that's been a pleasure.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
If I could say one more thing now, I saw the nice letter to the editor today about you. Thank you.
I haven't read the paper today.
Oh.
I saw the one yesterday, but wasn't so nice. Not about him, though.
You helped someone with a problem, Nadine Delabita wrote in, I think it was Nadine Delabita.
Is that Nadine?
Uh, that wrote in and wanted to inform the community how helpful you were for this woman to correct the situation and how patient and kind and pleasant.
For the chief. Oh, great, it's nice to hear good things.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go on to item number twelve. Steve Baker and Rheta Hogan regarding adopter resolution for the city council, the city of Waireka, employment of Willow Martindale and directing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding such limited term employment together with any and all other necessary documents.
So we're probably going to tag team this, you may recall that we talked about this at our.
Last meeting.
Goal-setting session and looking for some extra help. And one of the things that I kind of think of this position as, if you excuse the baseball metaphor, in case you're not a baseball fan, is sort of a utility infielder, someone that can play a bunch of different positions.
Right, right.
And so that's kind of the way that I really look at the, the position and what we need. We need some help and this is one way to get it. It's a limited term basis, so that's what we're looking at. Rheta could fill you in on some of the details if you would like. I do know that we did talk about this at that meeting, so if you have to answer any questions.
Okay.
I was looking at her qualifications on status and activities in which it would be included in that too. And it's, it has a, looks like it has a really good list of activities that she would be doing.
I like the code enforcement part.
That was the first thing I seen.
Yeah.
And I was like, good. So that was a big one right there in itself, code enforcement.
So, so when it says sixty to eighty, right here, we're not giving away.
Sixty-five to eighty.
We're not giving away the upper boundary of their negotiating salary, right?
Yeah, it seemed a little high to me, too.
Huh?
It's inclusive of the benefits.
Yeah, but why does it say sixty to, sixty-five to eighty?
It depends on the healthcare plan chosen.
Right, so now the guy knows, okay, well, I better, better pick the high-end one because they got eighty thousand paying me for all these benefits.
What, what you're suggesting is by putting this in the agenda item that you're.
Correct.
Reducing the city's negotiating position, correct?
That's what I think.
Okay. I think Rheta may have something to do with our negotiating position.
That's a good point.
Other than that, I'm okay.
Yeah, we, we discussed this at the strategic planning about the importance of getting someone that can help Rheta.
Oh, yeah.
And in order to help Rheta, well, it was actually a split position between the strategic planning goals as well as backup for Rheta, right? To get, it would be, we need someone who's very well qualified.
Right. And it, it really will be broad, we're going to throw a lot of things. And, and we'll be prioritizing obviously among those things, but really is somebody that can fill a lot of different holes.
And it's a one-year position?
Correct.
This was the person you were talking about that you might know?
Um.
You told us about.
The management team has met and interviewed this individual and seemed to think that it might fit some of the needs that we have collectively throughout. And some of those are delivering on the strategic goals that we have. Some of them, I have not gotten to any technology improvement projects for smarter or efficient government for a while. And we also, the individual has skills in being out with the public and meeting the public, having been an appraiser in Youngstown. So just has broad spectrum of skills that we think we could utilize and would be open. Not everyone's open into consideration of a limited term agreement and of course we'll be going into a biannual budget and might assess that there's a need for that.
Okay, one other question, is there anything in place regarding if she doesn't perform as well as expected to release her?
That's why I have the city attorney assisting me on the contract.
Excellent. We have an off-ramp.
That's right.
As well as an on-ramp. Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Oh, you're so shy.
Since when?
I'll move, we adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Waireka, employment of Willow Martindale and directing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding such limited term employment together with any and all other necessary documents.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to approve as recommended? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. And council member Bachego didn't even have to recuse himself. It's a nice change. Or Epstein.
Four, what, four times?
All right, now we're down to city manager staff reports.
Yes, mayor members of council, I just have a couple of brief items. One is to note that we are closed both the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of the month. So, yep. Bah Humbug? So that's Christmas and Boxing Day.
Monday and Tuesday.
Also, that, just to, the last time that we talked about it, we said the police building is just about ready to go out to bid. We have just one more thing, or maybe it was one or two or four, whatever. Anyway, those have been, for lack of a better term, swept away, handled, dealt with.
Good.
And as of Monday of this week, it is out on the street. If you know contractors that would like to work on that project, the bid information is out at the various exchanges. And also, I believe is available on our website, right, or, there's a way to get it. They're contractors, they'll figure it out.
What's the date on there?
Uh, the date is, I believe, January eighteenth.
Okay.
That's why we're looking at a special meeting of the council on the twenty-fifth. We need to check with you in terms of making sure that there's a time that works for everyone on that date. That date could be subject to change in the event that the bid period needs to be extended. Sometimes when there are really good questions from contractors that require a bid amendment, then sometimes it'll get pushed back. But we would like to get it done sooner than later so that we can try to get the contractors to lock in their prices before any pricing increases.
January twenty-fifth.
Correct.
Is that what you said, okay.
Yeah.
There's two things on that date that I can think of. I have a monthly meeting and I think there, isn't there a far safe council monthly meeting on the fourth Thursday, or did they change it?
Ask them.
We don't know what they did.
Nobody knows.
Yeah.
Well, I know I have a meeting, but if we had it earlier, I think.
If, if, if there's a ti, so we'll, we'll, we'll get in contact with you to try to set a time. We could do it on the twenty-fourth, but we would rather do it on the twenty-fifth so that we make sure that there's enough time to vet the contractors.
On the eighteen.
And come to you. Yeah.
There's also some rather USDA imposed requirements, certification, that they have the authority and so forth. So I would anticipate between the time that they, that we select who may be the low bidder, we're going to need information from them to prove their authority and that usually entails resolutions and so forth.
Will that take more than a week? Because that's only a week, it might take more.
Yeah.
We're going to, we'll, we'll figure it out, we just want to put a target date there for you. We do have the meeting on February one, so.
We could do it then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we, if we have to back it up a week, we will. And it's just that if we have the opportunity, you know, we're, staff's ready to go now. We've got those bidders out there.
Oh, yeah.
We just need their, we need them to do the work.
That's exciting.
So.
Well, I'm excited. I know the chief is.
The notice of mining bids is posted to the city website.
It is?
Yeah.
Posted, all right.
Okay, twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Eighteen, on the eighteen.
Two on the eighteen, the bill's changed.
It's on the eighteenth, we're not confirmed till the twenty-first.
Right.
We'll see, maybe, who, who knows, maybe Friday night, the twenty-sixth. What else good is there to do on a Friday night, right?
You better have pizza.
I could think of.
Well, we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Uh, no, I did find out the name of that board, so the chief doesn't, it is the Board of State and Community Corrections.
There you go. B-O-C-C.
Yeah.
State of State and what?
B-S-C-C.
Board of State and Community Correction.
Of course it is.
So I'm kind of thinking that, I understand why they just give us initials and why we don't remember the name. That's all I have.
I hate acronyms.
It's so friendly.
Okay. All righty, let's see, let's start at the other end.
Yeah, there you go.
Let's start with board reports with you, council member Bachego.
Oh, very well.
Unless they're going to ruckus or something.
So.
Be careful.
Um, since the last, since our last meeting, we had our strategic planning meeting and I thought that went very well. We had a good lively discussion. We had, I helped prepare and I know many of you attended the fire department Christmas dinner.
That's nice.
And that's always a lot of fun to put on.
You cooked? Oh, I didn't know that.
No, no, I cleaned. You ate some hors d'oeuvres, these, these hands touched some of those.
Okay.
And then Dave Lamar, one of our firefighters, actually did a superb job of decorating.
Yes, he did.
You can believe that, table decorations and the lights, it's like.
He did a nice job.
And he, and he was real proud of himself too, it's like, oh, you guys are going to like this. I'm thinking, I don't think so, but yeah, it was, he did a great job.
He did a nice job. Yep.
And Sunday morning, so I go right from that to Sunday morning Mason's breakfast, which they had for Toys for Tots.
Right.
So Marine Corps League and, and I think that was pretty well attended. I had to actually leave and then catch a flight to San Diego for, for some legal training. And then, I'm back, that's it.
You got back tonight.
I did get back tonight.
Thank you, we commend you on coming straight from the airport.
Yeah.
We went to the firefighter's dinner, which was very nice. And the YMCA had the ugly sweater run, which was nice and.
Did you run it?
You were at that, yeah.
I ran it, but I didn't do the course because.
Oh, this is funny.
I went in and when I registered, they told me it's going to be going to the greenway. And then when I went in to get my number that morning, they actually showed me a map showing it was going to the greenway and turning around the Oberlin Trailhead. So I went and, I went up with the two milers, turned around and then I went and did the rest of it. And I did my five miles, it wasn't the official course, but I actually ran the first race on the greenway. And I think.
Did you run into anybody?
I didn't run into any homeless people.
You thought you were that far ahead, did you?
No, I, I knew I wasn't in the race because I wanted to check that out. Like, I don't know what the confusion was, that they showed me a map twenty minutes before and then they changed it.
You never know.
Yeah.
They did it on purpose. Okay, thank you, anything else? Okay, council member Keg.
Oh, well, it's been a busy couple of weeks, obviously. I've, just in the last week alone, I've attended five meetings for the, for the homeless part of it. It's been educational, very educational.
In seven days' time, you attended five?
Five now.
Ah, okay, you got two days off for good behavior?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that was this weekend so I could work on my shops and step on a rusty nail that I had to go hit.
Ouch.
Tetanus shot and antibiotics because my foot swelled up, that was lovely. And, but, other, other than that, yeah, it's been good. We've been busy at work, there's a lot of stuff going on. Everybody, the big push, obviously, before Christmas is always the big push when it comes to the construction industry, to get cabinets, countertops and all that sort of stuff done before Christmas time. And this has not been, in one of those years, it's any different, so it's been very busy and chaotic. But it's been good on top of all the homeless stuff going on. We have, like I said, the point in time, it's going to be, like I said earlier, on, on January twenty-second, we'll actually start doing the count that evening for any homeless shelters or whatnot. The twenty-third is when we'll start going out about and doing the actual count, physical count. If anybody wants to help, I would love some volunteers.
We need volunteers.
Because we have a lot of area to cover.
Right.
Um, we're, I'm in charge of the whole Waireka area, coordinating where we're going and what times and who's all going out and doing that. So like I said, if anybody wants to come out and hang out and, and do some counting and talking, then it's great. And then, like I said, January second, we have, before that, we have our board supervisor meeting, which is going to be a crucial one to try to get them on board with the, with the whole idea that we're doing. So we have a lot going on in January, so our meeting for the, didn't get pushed till February first. That wouldn't hurt my feelings either on that aspect because Jan, at the end of January, I'm going to be very busy trying to get this orchestrated, the last count on that, but other than that, it's going to be a good month.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you for all your good work, we appreciate it.
Yes, it's a lot of time.
Yeah, it really is. Debbie.
Okay, I did go to the Liberty Arts, I can't call it an open house, but their art show on the eighth. And that was well attended. They had some really nice and still have the same pieces there. What's his name?
Bill?
Bill Durechik's. Projects are all moving things. And one of them, they all have gears and stuff in them, but one of them, to get the last gear to move would take sixteen years. Is that unreal? Yeah.
Wow.
So I was turning, I thought it was broken and it's, it's just that it's got these little teeny tiny things going on, so. But anyway, it's worth going into, it's, it's a nice display. I did do the ugly sweater run, first time with, actually the fourth time for me, but first time for my dog. And she actually had a lot of pictures taken.
She made the paper.
Yeah, yeah, she's the chubby little girl in there. I get a lot of pictures of my feet and shoes, so I'm going to have to upgrade my shoes. The fire department dinner, Christmas dinner was really nice and the guys are really generous and appreciative to counsel, to being supportive. But that's, that's an easy yes vote for me because if my house burns down, I'm not going to call my neighbor, you know? So, and I did go to your breakfast the next day afterwards too, and it's always really good. Do you guys ever take off a month? So you'll have something next, the third Sunday of every month? Do you know who it's for next time?
Um, I, I should, but I don't, I don't remember.
Okay.
I'm jet lagged.
Okay. Okay, and that's all.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, I'm sorry I missed you in the ugly sweater run, but I know there's lots of pictures, so I'll look for your shoes.
Yes.
Okay, so mainly, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas. Okay, um, so mainly, uh, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everyone, wishing everyone happy holidays. Uh, there's been a lot really on. It's all been mentioned. The strategic planning I thought, uh, was really interesting. That was on December twelfth. I had a tour of the casino on December eighth, which was really interesting. I'm trying to pull together a, a tour for the council as well. Um, because Mike Rose, the project manager, said that he would, he would be delighted to do it, so I just need to get some dates. Uh, the Lola meeting, looking forward to the board supervisors and the Lola meeting, getting more people involved in the point in time survey, um, as well as the homelessness issue. It's a slow process and I know that, that Pastor Don Cooper, it's not fast enough for him, but, um, there's, there's a certain way that you have to do things in the documentation to get the funding for the services. So I'm looking forward, uh, to, to getting that accomplished. And mainly just looking forward to finishing out this year and with good, with family and friends and, and, uh, looking forward to twenty eighteen. So Merry Christmas to all.
Yes.
I think with that, any other?
Closed session.
Do we have closed session?
No closed session tonight here.
Okay, closed session tonight is canceled, so collection, adopt resolution approving updates to the city's capital improvement plan and development impact fee program. So we opened the public hearing at this time, right Liz? Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there's any comments from the public. Don't everybody jump up at once. Okay, there doesn't appear to be any public, uh, comment at this time, so I would bring it back to the council and city manager?
Reda.
Reda, who's presenting this?
Uh, I'll start and if anyone wants to comment on the other side, please join me.
Okay.
But this is a annual report to the city council, two, two components here. It's the annual report showing the revenue received from development impact fees and, um, any allocation of those funds to specific projects, um, that were originally adopted in the, um, development fee impact, um, report in two thousand and six. So, um, the fees that were received, which is in appendix or attachment.
Three.
Thank you.
Attachment three, is that what you said? Okay.
Correct. Shows that, um, the fees collected were fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and of those fees, um, expended were eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five. That have been dedicated for the growth component of, um, projects that were developed through the USDA COP, which had a growth component and.
For water.
For water and wastewater.
Right.
And we're, or sewer, excuse me, the sewer collection system, whereas we're debt servicing those for over forty years and, um, we'll, we're offsetting that for the growth component because each component of the project had a certain percentage attributable to growth on that. Um, interest earnings, um, that were earned on the fund balance were two thousand, a hundred and sixteen dollars. But as of six thirty seventeen, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars remain. At one time, one of the projects that, from the original study, was of course the police, um, expand the police area, um, and secure the outdoor area. And the city has flagged part of the public facilities money to augment that as, as needed.
So part of this two hundred and fifty-three thousand?
Of the public facilities money of the two hundred and eighteen thousand.
Oh, the one at the top.
Will be augmented for that.
Question on that.
Sure.
Is, is that two hundred and eighteen thousand included in the total reserves of the police station?
It is not.
One point seven million or something?
It is not.
So that's an additional money that.
It could be, right, right. It's discretionary for that because there's more than one public facility that the council might, um, choose to allocate on that, but we're just flagging that, um, in the original report. It identified six hundred and ninety thousand need in improvement needs. Granted, this was back in two thousand and six. Um, for the police area in the public facilities report.
Okay.
So that is kind of the report on the, um, fees received and their, um, allocation. And the second component of the report is acknowledging the, um, the project fee that really hasn't changed from the original two thousand and six study and the, um, capital projects are still identified in attachment one of the report. And we've tried to annotate where, um, some of those projects, they have the, um, strikeout, um, for those components that have been, um, fulfilled either with city resources and or augmentation of development fees. The, um, development fees never have reached their full potential and two, two reasons really why is, is there hasn't been growth, big growth, um, and the fees are at a reduced level, so.
The fees are at half right now, right?
Correct. And there is no recommendation to change the fees at this time. And then, um, historically, there have been some other public works projects, um, and that's in attachment four. And really the important column there is whether or not there is some growth component to that. And that would be the far right column and only those that have, um, diff flagged on it would have any consideration of diff on that. And to what percentage would have to be evaluated at contemplation of the project is, is growth component. So I don't expect that.
Looks like there's five that are flagged?
Flagged and I don't expect it will be on, on construction of these projects. We're looking to basically update this with the completion of several master plans and then reevaluate the whole scope of the, um, impact fees. Cause it needs kind of the updated master plans. We've completed a lot of projects. We're getting new master plans. It's kind of like layering together and then the rate study and then we'll kind of the last layer, last, last piece of that is redevelopment of our capital projects and a diff, and a diff report on that, so. And the action tonight would be for the council to adopt the resolution, um, approving the development fee impact report and updating the city's capital improvement plan and development impact fee program. And Donna, do you want to add anything to that? He's gone through it.
I think you were very eloquent and I don't have any questions.
Alright, so.
Penny, we have one question.
Sure.
Um, under streets, you've got a little over thirty thousand, almost thirty thousand, eight hundred dollars in streets.
Mm-hmm.
And that Indian balance.
Right.
Now, what about if that money gets put toward chip ceiling? Because, uh, I think we're planning, what, about four hundred thousand dollars in chip ceiling and street repairs next year from the measure money?
Normally, the development impact fees are for increasing the, the roadways. So for example, width or something like that as opposed to maintenance.
Uh-huh.
So I would not advise, um, using that for chip ceiling.
It actually have to be, it's, it's the component that's associated with the impacts caused by growth.
Okay.
So in norm, they've identified some street projects that it could be, um, attributed to originally and that's, um, table four, four point five dash one, um, which were in intersection improvements.
So is that that thirty thousand dollars you've got on attachment three for streets? There's thirty thousand, seven ninety-nine, seventy for streets. On attachment three.
That's correct. That, those are the funds that have been accrued for these projects.
Okay.
Then it could be from that table, um, four point five dash one and, or anything attributable to growth.
So it's basically traffic signals, uh, upgrades, stuff like that.
Right, right.
Okay, any other questions? I would entertain a motion. For as much. Don't just jump in.
We, we need two motions, right? Or no?
No, we just.
Just one.
Just the one motion? That's the, the recommended motion unless you have another motion?
I'll make a motion. It says, uh, the city will adopt a resolution approving updates in the city's capital improvement plan and development impact fee program. And then it says adopt a resolution approving, okay, that's, that's the same thing, okay.
That's A and B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so a report out of what we've done with the fees and reaffirming the project list.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept as presented, correct? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eleven. Mr. Baker, discussion, update, possible actions, Siskiyou homelessness coalition, point in time survey, continuum of care participation. I think that Dwayne and I have some input on this as well. Okay. Mr. Baker?
So to a great extent, I don't be, I, I don't expect to be talking much about this, but I did want to, um, mention that obviously two members of the council are participating in this coalition.
Mm-hmm.
And the part that, um, I'm looking at is there's a continuum of care that's involved in this and the city share of that based on population would be about thirteen hundred bucks.
Right.
And there is a draft MOU which is tragically, uh, not done, uh, not tragically in the sense that it really needs some work.
Nobody's dying over it.
So, and yeah, no, not, not that.
Hopefully.
So, what I was thinking is that, um, if, if you want to, between the two of you wanting to make a report on it and then when we get down to the bottom on the recommendation, uh, the council may wish to give direction on that thirteen hundred dollars, even though the MOU is not ready for first act.
Okay. Um, this is, this is something that, uh, that Dwayne and I have been working on and Dwayne has taken a lead role in this and I would turn it over to you. Uh, it's been, it's taken a lot of time and energy for a lot of people in this room. Um, it's a, it's a, it's an, it's a matter of great concern and, uh, we do have an important event coming up. And I would agree with Steve that this twelve hundred and ninety-seven is the amount, that's our portion of seventy-five hundred dollars split between the county and all the cities. However, um, I would like to see us maybe entertain up to a little higher in case there's a few smaller cities that, that can't afford it or if we could chip in on the four hundred and fifty dollars for the.
Four hundred dollars and fifty cents.
Right, and fifty cents, okay. I'll let you talk about that. Anyway, um, so it might be like up to as much as two thousand and twenty-five.
How's it divided up? Did they just say?
So we took, we actually took the populace of each city.
Population.
The population of each city and calculated out that, cause there's an overall fee in, on this and it's seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay, sorry.
Um, yeah, it kinda shows on the whole thing.
So, so why, why would you wanna kick in more if it's the population of each city? It's kind of, they kind of base it on, on what they're.
Correct, but there's like what Mayor is stating on there, there's gonna be some people that aren't gonna be able to perform their, their obligation of that part of it. And this is what we're gonna be hitting and talking to the county about on, uh, January second, we're actually going to the board of supervisors and speaking with them on their part of this whole thing too. Um, everybody plays a role on this. Um, the, the overall picture is everybody's gonna chip in and why, by going by the population of this, it breaks it down into a, a number that is more doable for each population of the city. So Montague, for example, Montague might not be able to pitch anything.
So you don't know though?
We don't know that, no, we're correct.
That's why it's up to, up to a certain amount.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I, it, it may be helpful to talk about the overall strategy for the point in time.
The point in time survey.
And also discuss what the purpose of the continuum of care is.
Right.
Um, before talking about.
Bringing, bringing funding back, right.
And if, if I, if, I, I know I brought that up first because I said that's my little piece, but, um.
That's why, I was gonna bring that up last, but thank you for.
Yeah, so erase what I said, but then bring up the other stuff first. We'll deal with the other part last.
Okay, Dwayne, you wanna?
So, we'll get started on what this has been involved. We have spent lots of hours.
Many hours.
In this whole situation, trying to address and figure out what the best strategy is for addressing this, the homeless issue. There are so many different avenues on this that there's no easy fix. There's no way that we can actually just say, okay, if we do this one thing, it's gonna resolve it all. It's not gonna happen. Two, two, excuse me, key elements in this whole thing are, one, the point in time that we're gonna be doing. In January twenty second, we start the point in time, so it's a survey.
Survey.
Basically to find out how many homeless people are in this area. And we're not talking just Waireva alone. We're talking all of Siskiyou County. Um, the county was supposed to be doing this from day one back years ago and have not been meeting that obligation. When we found out about that happening, we jumped in and said, hey, if we need to take care of this, we need to know how many people are homeless in Siskiyou County. So that, that endeavor alone is huge to try to orchestrate how, trying to find out how many homeless people are in Siskiyou County is like trying to guess how many drops are in a bucket. It's, it's crazy. Um, I put on tons of events and this is gonna be one of the bigger events I get to put on and it's gonna be challenging. Um, Ed Pet, Ed Petches, um, down in Team Shasta and he has, has been orchestrating a lot of this. Coming up with the research, trying to find out how to do all these things, cause it's all a new game for all of us. We, nobody really knows how, you know, how it wasn't getting started, why it wasn't getting started, I should say. But now we're orchestrating this, we're getting it done. So on January twenty second, we start this point in time count. It continues on through basically January twenty ninth, so we have a few days to figure this out. But there's a lot of key elements that are involved in that, you know, we have, um, resource management, or excuse me, resource center, Waireva resource center of all over. So, you know, Dunsmere, Truly Lake, all the resource centers. We gotta coordinate that with all these people. Um, county, we have behavioral health involved in that, which is a huge, huge help for us because they can take their numbers and help apply it to this too with basically what they already have, the numbers that they have. They can call up these people and find out what true numbers are in that, so that, uh, that alone is, you would be surprised on how many numbers there is on that alone. So that's a, that's a key factor there. The next one is the HMIS, the homeless management information system. This system is devised so the people that need services, that need basically clothing, food, whatnot, that are homeless, can get these services. But there also is way we can track that system too, so. We know that this person is getting this service and this service and this service and not getting double dipping in a service and, and denying that service to somebody that truly needs it. So we can manage that system knowing that people that are getting the services actually deserve those services and are not abusing those services. And that's gonna be statewide also. It's actually, it's kind of a west coast thing. There's different systems out there. The system that we're going with is pretty much the west coast, so it's, it's a huge system to be able to enter this numbers and the data to be able to keep track of who is actually out there needing these services and making sure that they're not getting abused. Those two key elements, um, will hopefully in the future be able to bring us some funding from the state and hopefully from the federal government to where we can maybe do some, have some programs for people to do, you know, uh, rehabs of some sort, to be able to find affordable housing for people, to, you know, get them the mental health that they need. So there's, there's a lot of key factors involved in that, but to be able to recognize where those services are, to be able to recognize who needs those things and how many people they are is the first step. And that's what this HMIS system is, is gearing towards and that's where this funding that we're talking about is actually gearing it towards too. Any, like if anything else, you start a program, it's not gonna be free. And in order to be able to do this, we need to be able to have some funding to be able to keep track of that. I don't know about you or me, but I don't have time to do all the paperwork involved in keeping track of all this. That's what this does. That's what this system pays for.
No, I understand that. I mean, I, I don't have any problem about that. I'm just wondering, you know, well, it'd be nice to know what cities can afford and then, and then we can address it, yeah?
And, and, and we are, we are actually working on that. We're working with all of them.
Actually, we are going to make this presentation at the Lola meeting. We're going to bring it up and, and we got some time on the agenda to present it to all the cities because the only cities that have been active on our Siskiyou County homelessness coalition are Mount Shasta ourselves, uh, and Weed.
Is Weed on? I didn't see a Weed representative on here.
Yeah, they're on there. Uh, but it's so important because what we're looking at with this point in time, uh, survey, it will establish a number, in other words, it will establish important documentation that is necessary to get the funding for the services from the state as well as from the feds. If we don't have the. If we don't have the documentation, if we don't have it properly documented on their forms, then we don't get the funding, right.
In fact, I even know why you have this nightmare of point in time where everyone has to do it at the same time.
Same day.
Because they can't be in two places at the same time, so you're going to get an accurate reading. I got that too, yeah.
And it's throughout the whole state.
Yeah?
There are so many elements to this, it's amazing, like I said, I've put on lots of, lots of events and this is going to be a huge event to put on.
So if I understand the mayor correctly then, so basically Weed, Mount Shasta and ourselves, those have been the only ones that are, that even are aware of this, so...
No, not necessarily.
Or were that, that are aware of this, the money?
Yeah, probably.
Pretty much.
We're, we're going to be presenting that in January at the Lola meeting in Montague.
And then they'll have to put it on their city agenda.
Right, and we've been working with, Shasta County actually gets all the funding for the north state. And heretofore, all the money has been going to Shasta County and I think only one other county because no one reached out to them. So Ed Petches, the gentleman that we're working, you remember, he came with Dr. Marbut. He actually located these people, he called up and he said, I understand that, you know, that there's some housing that there's funding for that's available, you know, in our county and we don't know anything about it. And so what we found out was that there was housing for homeless, that they had excess housing and they were giving it to college students because they didn't think we had enough homeless people or, not just homeless people, but qualified people.
Qualified, yes.
Qualified, the veterans as well as, you know, single moms or single dads with kids and, you know, people with special needs.
So what's your timeline on, on, on having, or needing this money?
We have to have this by January, before the point in time.
So before, before anyone, any other city can act on it?
Actually, it's, it's a little bit more complicated than that because we're in startup mode. So I think there's two timelines, so let me tell you the, the reason why it's on the agenda tonight as a number is that, so that when the collected people on the coalition go to Lola, then we can say there's, hopefully, there's support from the Wairega City Council to do this, the, you know, the money. And then the other stuff in terms of startup, it'll probably be closer to February. As I mentioned, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to the MOU to get, so we're, we're trying to move on two, two things at the same time. One is to do the point in time survey and get that done on the only date that it can really be done.
Right.
And then also join the continuum of care so that all of those various agencies are coordinating and we're trying to bring the money in.
Right, it still doesn't answer the question, when does the seventy-five hundred have to be on the table?
That we have actually time on, the seventy-five hundred dollars we have time on. We have to make a commitment is basically what it amounts to.
Yeah, I got it.
So the seventy-five hundred dollars, I think we actually have to, I got it in my pile of notes.
I think you explained it though.
Yeah, no, I got it.
It's a little bit later, but I don't, that's why I didn't give you the exact date.
So we're just, we're saying, hey, we'll support twelve ninety-seven.
Correct, that's all we're asking for, you know, we can actually say...
If we need to do more, we'll, we can...
We can do it.
Address it later.
And, and, yeah, and by doing this too, it also shows that we are committed as a city to try to help the situation and by us being committed as a city, that hopefully it'll bring the other cities to see, okay, Wairega is really committed to this issue, we need to be committed to this issue too and hopefully they'll follow suit. And same with the county, you know, we're, we're going on January second to, to the Board of Supervisors and present this to the Board of Supervisors too. So it's, it's going to continue on.
The county has been at the table, Lisa next one.
Yes.
They're, they're aware of a fifty-one percent contribution.
One, one out of five members of the Board of Supervisors are aware. We're going to go make the others aware.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
That's not good.
Well, I think it's important that we approve at least the twelve ninety-seven tonight and put it on record that the city of Wairega supports it, so that'll help you with the county and help you when you present it to Lola. So if there's not further discussion, I'll make the motion that we approve the point in time survey and that we give twelve ninety-seven for participation in this continuum of care.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second to approve and contribute our portion of twelve ninety-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one more thing, the chief wants to say something because we're really relying upon the chief and Lieutenant Gamache and the police department to help guide us
Yes.
and keep us safe when we're doing this point in time survey. Because I don't know about the rest of you, I have not been out in the homeless community. I know Dwayne is fearless, I am not.
I was hoping to take a moment to give you a little information on, show you the police department and the chiefs of police come in in this arena for quite some years.
Yes.
And a lot of you may not know a lot of this information, so I thought it would be beneficial to briefly cover it. I'll try to move a little faster, if you have any questions on the issues.
Oh, timeline.
This is nice.
You got a timeline, good job.
If you have any questions on any of the issues, feel free to stop me because I'll try to cover fast, I know I don't want to keep you here too long, but, you know, homelessness has been in Wairega a very long time. Twenty-seven years ago, the people living along the creek, they lived there year round. And we've had shootings on the creek twenty-seven years ago, we've had all kinds of issues. As we've spent a little more money in those areas, a lot of those people have moved out. Homelessness in society has changed immensely and affecting most of our communities everywhere. And so it's affecting everybody and it's really a hard thing to try to solve. It's almost impossible, cities are spending upwards of, San Francisco, three point one million dollars on it and still haven't got a handle on it. So...
Oakland too.
Yeah, I mean, we realized this was an issue back in two thousand fourteen where the Wairega Police Department appointed a homeless liaison officer in two thousand fourteen. We also came up with some guidelines, some, a tri-fold handout to give the homeless on some resources that's available in our community. So as time has gone on, there was some money that was coming available through Prop thirty, BSCC funding. The chiefs of police got this money for a few years and it was normally divided between each agency entity to use how they see fit. As the time went on, the state said, hey, you need to use it for groups, different types of functions. So December fifth, two thousand sixteen, I got some information on BS, BSCC funding.
What, what does BSCC stand for?
Um, I don't have that. Bureau of...
Bureau of Cops.
I can get that to you.
I don't know.
The important part is funding.
Yeah, funding, yes.
Funding, yeah.
Yeah, I can get that information to you. I'm sorry I didn't have that.
That's okay.
They sent us some information with guidelines available to use for the chiefs of police. This is only available to chiefs of police, not to the county.
Oh, okay.
Not to the county. They get different funds of large buckets of money. This was something Cal chiefs negotiated for and realigned.
Oh, okay.
So we received the guidelines December eighth, two thousand sixteen. December fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, I called for a meeting with all the chiefs in Siskiyou County on how to best use this money. We met down in Weed and we went over different problems that were affecting our communities. It was quite apparent that homelessness was a rising issue and I said someday it will bite us all in the butt. And so we determined that we would use our money to form a homeless liaison group. And so January fifth, two thousand seventeen, we had a second meeting to discuss it, formalize it, a vote was called on January thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. And then the problem was actually finding someone to do the work. Parish Cross with Mount Shasta Police Department said, I have this team, Team Shasta, that's already doing this down in South Bend. They're willing to expand to the entire county. I said, that's great. He said he would be the fiduciary of Wairega, the city Wairega gets some money, we would give them the money. And of course, there had to be a vote, which, there was a vote called. City of Wairega received the money on January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen from the state. January twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, YPD was requested, requested to send Prop thirty money to Team Shasta. One day after we received the money, we were requesting it to be sent. So as you can see, this timeline is very fast, we knew that this problem existed, we got on it right away. This money wasn't sitting around in our coffers for very long before it was put to work. February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, Mayor Jones Smith Freeman and City Manager Baker received an overview and update on Team Shasta emailed forward from Ed Petches. Ed Petches is a man, a very, a good man that I've worked with many years in different functions when he worked at different jobs throughout the state. And he was willing to take this on as part of Team Shasta. I knew from the moment that he said that, we'd be okay. For those of you that have met him. March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, they formed, Team Shasta got a consultant and formed a RFP sent out to the mayor and city manager of Wairega to take a look at. In March of two thousand twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, we did get a claim against the city for throwing away homeless property on private property. Part of the state, Wairega Police Department worked with city crew and jail crews in the county. We cleaned up public property and private property. Private property was a lot easier to clean up, believe it or not, than public property. But we did do on private property, up until this time, and up until the claim, we thought that was a good idea. And then after this claim, we decided it wasn't a very good idea anymore. And so that was, that was stopped at that time. May second, two thousand seventeen, I developed a, a one-page sheet for homeless in Wairega with objectives to assist officers in the public with some roles. May twelfth, two thousand seventeen, met with Dr. Marbut in Wairega and went over our homeless issues and now is to help him formulate his report. May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, discussions with city staff about the storage of homeless property, it's a huge problem. Cities spend thousands of dollars and we are starting to spend thousands of dollars on this subject itself, which I'll get into in just a moment. As a result, city crew will pick up stored homeless property and store it at the city yard. Also a discussion about abandoned motorhomes. So we have a huge problem with abandoned motorhomes, which you may see a few around here. So what happens is they park on private property or public property, if we can tow them, we can. Using all the, these big trucks, we have, coming with all these reasons to try to tow them. Problem is the tow companies refuse to tow them. The reason being is that they tow their yard, it costs them more money than the tow, even if we paid them for the tow, to tear them apart, they have to be taken apart because of all the different materials, fiberglass, the copper lines, this lines, that lines, and they lose big money, they refuse to tow them.
Have you ever tried the CHP model?
And what's that?
They refuse to make calls to wreckers that won't take the ones that they can make money off of.
But we, we, we can suspend them and we have done that. We've, we had a meeting with them, we've had, I think, two meetings in the past. So the problem is that all are in the same boat, I don't know if they've banded together or not. We can put them on suspension, but they all say the same thing. So we can do a number of things in this arena, we can create our own city tow company and run it as a city or we can designate one tow company, our mini code allows us to designate one tow company and they will get all our toes, but they have to take everything we want. Right now, we do use the CHP model, which is, we have a tow rotation, they have to meet all these guidelines, which is insurance qualifications, they have to post their rates, et cetera, et cetera. We go down a red list, we call them as we have crashes and toes at night. If there's more than one vehicle, we call them, if they can take two on that one call, they get it. But they're very, they, they listen to the, they listen and see who gets what call because they get all upset when they get skipped or something like this. And we have skipped them numerous times and put them on restriction, but it, it's not working. So what has happened is we're towing motorhomes to the city yard. Right now we have two, we should have got three, we're towing them to the city yard. I have motorhomes that are on their wheels, sitting on public streets, we can't leave them. We have motorhomes sitting in public parking lots, I cannot leave them as a public safety issue. They have to be towed somewhere, Matt's not happy about it, nobody in the city is happy about it, but they have to go somewhere.
There, there was one over behind where the old Boston Shaft was, that parking lot there. But there were two, at first there was one, broken down there, and then there was a second one and I've noticed that the, that the one that's operational tow's the one that doesn't work.
Like one died on both of them, we just took one from him this week because he had it hooked under railies. And we've been working closely with the different businesses throughout town. One of the biggest issues, problems is the railies shopping center. The company has just said that they would, they would tow them. Well, there was one sitting out there, you may have seen it for three or four days this week, sitting out there with... We took the guy to jail, he had three or four warrants and it's a prime opportunity when you take somebody to jail, take, if their vehicles there could be taken. But their problem was issuing the checks, they, their company isn't, they have to issue the check before they can tow it. And so they're working on a strategy to try to fix that. So it's a big problem for us, we, we're taking tents, we're taking dumb truck loads or truck loads? Truck loads, on pond truck loads to the city yard now. They have been, we've had people going through some of that stuff, we've had to do actual patrol at the city yard.
You just store it in the city yard amongst all of the, the trucks and the materials? I mean, what do you do with it? It must take up a lot of room.
Yeah, yeah, we should create a area that's closed, that's fenced for this and we've been, I've been looking at prices for that, which would be a whole nother meeting, but I have...
The, the county or the cities never formed a vehicle abatement authority to handle that sort of thing?
On public, private property? These are registered vehicles parked in private property. If we can tow them, we tow them. For example, the one, we towed one Monday morning, the other one we couldn't tow. If he would have been arrested out of the vehicle, we could have towed it. The property owner in this case was going to tow it, but they couldn't get the, they can't, still can't get a check issued. So it's, it's a problem that we've been working on for at least a year and a half. And we're still trying to solve it. And maybe I, the city attorney seems to have some ideas that maybe we can try to solve it.
How long are you supposed to keep their property?
Hundred and twenty days.
Wow.
And then what? Burn it?
And we hope it comes, no, it can be disposed of.
You can, you can dispose of it?
Yeah. Auction, whatever, yeah.
And we haven't even gotten down to the shopping cart issue.
It's on there too, yeah. That's a whole nother issue.
What hundred and twenty days come from, is that a state?
Municipal code, we don't really, there's other codes that say something different, but the city municipal code, so...
So we can say sixty?
We can change it, but I think it's, I want to say ninety.
Ninety?
Our Lexapro, our Lexapro manual, we have a manual, department manual, I think it, it's less but because our municipal code says it's more, we have to go with the municipal code.
Well, we can change that, we have a little bit of power here.
Okay.
Yeah, from one twenty to ninety.
Yeah.
That'd be worth it.
Something.
And, and we do have a room next to the police department, at the building we rent, that gets filled up with homeless property also. They won't take it to the jail. So every person goes to jail with their shopping carts, it gets bagged up, put in our facility.
Rob, do you got room in your yard?
So that's just one of many, many, many problems that we have.
It's the city yard.
It's just a, my deal is...
A city yard.
But I thought I'd at least bring them to you and so, yeah. And the city yard said they can only hold ten, ten motorhomes, so hopefully we don't fill it up.
So a motorhome is also a hundred and twenty days?
That's probably, they never claim them, we hope they come and claim them.
Is that part, is that prob, does that come under the hundred and twenty days also?
Because it's a vehicle?
I think there's, that's a lot more complicated because there's a title search that would have to be done on it and try to find the owners, et cetera. Tow yards won't take them, we're taking them and it's, it's, it's going to be a big problem at some point.
Because even if it was a hundred and twenty days, I mean, then what do you do with it? So now it's ours?
Technically, it's ours, we would probably have to disable, dis, dis...
Disassemble?
Dismantle, I couldn't come to the word, sorry. Dismantle and segregate it as we're taking it to the junkyard in different piles.
Wow.
Stuff like that. It's a big problem, they do this with boats too, they just sink them because their, our glass is more than it. They just sink them in all over the lakes.
Well, that's terrible.
They were not worth anything to sell, old boats, shit.
They just sink them?
Yeah.
They just sink the poke homes off the...
You know, I just thought of something for the motorhomes.
Do you want to vote?
No.
Practice for the fire department.
I wonder if Mr. Pastor Krueger would like to recycle them as little mini homes.
Outside the city limits?
Yeah.
Thank you, Liz.
Not real pretty. No, no, I was teasing.
We can certainly check into that.
No, no, I was teasing, really.
We did have, June seventh, two thousand seventeen, we had a public meeting, coffee with a cop. This was a, you could see it on Wairega News, it's a videotaped, it's quite a lively meeting in which we met with the business owners and the public and went over a lot of homeless issues, a lot of issues in general. Looking at three or four arrests right out the window while they were videotaping at the plaza.
That was handy.
How that was going on. Six twelve, two thousand seventeen, homeless recommendations sent to city staff. Seven eighteen, two thousand seventeen, presentation from Dr. Marbut to the city, city of Wairega homeless coalition team on his study, that was in the morning and then the evening, as you recall, we got this study firsthand to the public, which was...
We had a public meeting here, right.
Seven twenty five, he published it after with the presentation. Eight one, city manager identified some homeless issues in Puerto Rico. Eight three, meeting with Mayor Jones Smith Freeman, Councilmember Brian Kegel, and homeless issues in Puerto Rico, including shopping carts, which we'll get into in a little bit down here. Eight, eight, two thousand seventeen, meeting with city manager on homeless in Puerto Rico. Eight ten, meeting with Puerto Rico city manager's office, with Puerto Rico lieutenant to discuss and identify issues. Eight fourteen, Puerto Rico, YPD chief notes on Marbut's study, a twenty-seven page report condensed into two pages. I'll get that for you if you'd like.
Executive summary, right.
Chief, eight fourteen, chief creates a letter to private property owners for notification and ways to help homeless address the encampments on their property. This is like a check sheet form sent. The people, we create an internal policy on handling of encampments on private property, encampments on private property, parks and vouchers. That was an internal document created so that my officers and staff know how to deal with this more effectively. Six eighteen, chief created private property encampment sheet. So, this was turned in anytime, so many reports, I think we've had over a hundred and four since July, reports of this. Of encampments in different areas, suspe- suspected encampments, and that, that sheet is then forwarded to lieutenant. Lieutenant will then take that on. A lot of them were duplicate entries. Yeah, a lot of them were duplicate calls. We get about ten or twelve calls on one camp. We get, especially when we did outreach, public outreach, which I'll get to in just a minute. Eight seventeen, we had a staff meeting with all the supervisors and at the police department on the implementation of the new operating procedures for homelessness and encampments. Eight seventeen, there was also a Team Shasta meeting where the lieutenant attended. Eight twenty one to eight, nine four, two thousand seventeen, YPD issued four shopping cart tickets, and we lodged, I should say lodged, lodges thirty-two shopping carts at the new Puerto Rico Police Department building, which they still are there in the state. Walmart has not picked them up.
You're kidding!
No.
I forgot to tell you about that, yeah.
We were lucky that they did come and pick up the city manager, we were talking about this very issue, and the city manager actually, we made four or five calls. City manager called, left a message, and for some reason, the next day they were picked up by Walmart, not at our facility, at all the other places around town.
If I'd realized there were some in the station, all I did was I suggested that if they didn't come out and pick up the shopping carts, I was talking to an assistant manager, that we might have to take some further action to enforce that, and it would probably be easier to pick up the shopping carts than to deal with us.
So, it seemed to work on the city manager. We still have thirty-two in our building.
So, has anyone contacted, it's Walmart, right?
Yes.
Has anybody contacted Walmart about these thirty-two? Because I've noticed lately, they've been running short of shopping carts. They have to do more runs.
I guess they'll wait till they run out before they can.
They don't have one truck that can get them all. We said we'd push them all out for them.
Yeah, but could somebody call them and let them know?
Yes, more stores.
This is their season, that's great.
Getting through to the right person, it's tough.
Well, I saw the manager, what's his name?
Baker.
Landon Chamberlain.
Landon.
I see him all the time.
Yeah, I, yeah, I saw him at the shop with the cop, and I wish I had known at that time, I would have suggested that perhaps they should pick up their thirty-two shopping carts.
Yeah, they're, they're holding our space ransom.
Oh, why?
We, on, eight twenty-five, open container ordinance, you know, this could be in correlation to homeless, I'm not sure, but. Eight twenty-two, I think I got some dates mixed around there. We developed a tri-fold handout, which I have here tonight, there's about fifty of them here.
Okay.
If I copy them, I can get them for you.
Good.
On, on various issues. Lost my spot.
Tri-fold, and then planned implementation, right. Eight twenty-nine?
Eight twenty-nine?
Yeah, you, you tightened up some procedures and then modified the open container ordinance.
Yep, we modified the open container ordinance, city staff. And we took, nine twelve, public outreach by use of Facebook. So, this was really tremendous, had about thirteen thousand three hundred hits. All positive comments from the public on this procedure. At that time, we had cleaned up seven encampments between when we started this with my staff and that date. Over the next week or two, we handed out about three to four hundred tri-fold guides. We went out to block downtown and all the businesses handing these out, and we had people coming in asking for stacks twenty-five at that time. Good, good information for the public. City staff and work on the modification of the ordinance. Nine twenty-eight, two thousand seventeen, ten twenty, ten five, two thousand seventeen, reviewed by city council and sent back for modifications. Eleven six, review of open container ordinance with city attorney. Eleven eight, meeting with Siskiyou County, use of place for review about the homeless encampments and voucher system, going over what we're doing. We shared our, there had been no city that developed any procedures or policies, we shared all ours with them, now Shasta has been using some of those. Eleven sixteen, Puerto Rico city council review of open container ordinance. Seven, or twelve seven, council reviews of open container ordinance, first reading. Twelve eleven, two, two officers attended the homeless point in time study, really interesting, the question's gonna be used, et cetera. They were discussing about kicking tents, not kicking them, but going to the tents at seven o'clock in the morning. We suggested maybe a later time, only because a lot of people don't, when it's nineteen degrees out, they don't come out of their tent to talk to you at that time in the morning. Might be a little better to go a little later in the day. So, there was a lot of information exchange at that meeting, and hopefully they'll take a look at that.
Yeah, Dave's been really good, Gamash was awesome. Him and I got to sit down after that and talk about some of the encampments and stuff like that, and really knowledgeable. He informed me of a couple of encampments that I didn't even know about, so that was good.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, you can't really see them, but we do have, as you probably looked at the binder, on private property. Yeah, there's none that we know of right now on public property. There may be one that we're just gonna report on.
Uh, there, I don't know if it's private or not, but on the Puerto Rico Oberlin trailhead, if you go up the, north on the trail and right where it goes underneath five, if you look to the right on the hill, there's two tents and a teepee.
So, on the hill, that's.
Yeah, we know about that, that's a private property.
That's private property, yeah.
And, and the owners have been notified.
Okay.
And so, we still continue to follow our guidelines, work with the property owners, letting them know of the five different things that could, it could be trespassing. Homeless people on their property, fire hazard, hazardous, not hazardous material, and.
Oh, yes, I would say, because they have no.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
And that's for public health issues, but they're noti, they're notified and those boxes are checked, and they're put on formal notice.
Awesome.
And then hopefully.
We have a mechanism to charge a private property owner unless they've been notified that there are people living on their property? That if there's a fire and it spreads, that, that they're gonna be, we're gonna bill them for all of that?
Well, I think at some point, they'll be referred to the city for public nuisance, and I think that could be part of it.
You know, I think that's important, because if Cal Fire helps with that, then we're charged. So, we should pass that on.
I agree one hundred percent. That was one of the reasons why we put fire danger on those sheets, so that the property owners notified, lieutenant keeps a running log with who's been notified and when. And so, if something were to happen after that time, especially after we've had a couple fires in the Police Department.
So, I see Steve writing, so, sounds like you're gonna whip that one up. See if we have something on the books already, if we need to modify something, or?
Oh, I'm sure I'll have to ask some questions.
Why about people's homeowner insurance?
Say it again.
Um, having homeless people on their private property, would that not make their homeowner, owner insurance go up high?
I don't know. It's not that.
That's a thought.
Yeah.
So, that's actually a good, a good issue that you bring up with, and actually, I've discussed that, that there's gotta be a way that we can actually discuss that with the property owners and make them aware that that could be a liability issue on their insurance, correct?
If they have insurance, and they just land it, so, am I right?
Yeah, I know.
Most don't, yeah.
On twelve, twelve, two thousand seventeen, head patches reached out for assistance. We're hoping to have two to three persons ununiformed.
Yes.
With the counters, in case there are any problems. Twelve twelve.
Thank you.
Coalition. Siskiyou Homeless Coalition and Continual Care Memorandum of Understanding Proposal was forwarded to the mayor, Jones Smith Freeman, and city manager for review, which it sounds like you may have had that before.
Yeah, we had it tonight.
And lieutenant attended another point in time survey, and they did discuss in length some of the issues involving that particular council member.
It's kept you, it's kept you busy, hasn't it?
And twelve twenty-one, tonight, we did approve the open container ordinance.
Yes.
I have that in.
So, please fill in the blank, yeah.
Fill the blank.
So, overall, we've spent a little bit of time on this, and it means a lot to us to, to do something. It's a, it's an issue affecting all of us, and.
Thank you.
Business owners are upset. They have been less upset since there hasn't been, I don't think we've had one call for service since December first downtown on homeless.
Really? Good. That's good to know, that's after the.
My assistant advisor told me that this morning.
That's good.
One call on homeless since December first.
So, the change of, much location?
That's one, yeah, the change of location.
That's great.
So, there, I would say there's direct correlation to wherever there's, it will be homeless shopping, the calls of service will greatly increase. That's something for the council to consider in the future.
I saw on twelve eleven, the animal patrol officers?
Yes.
A lot of them do have dogs.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a whole nother problem that we deal with with them, because you have to be a resident of Puerto Rico to have a license.
Right, and approachability on the survey, so y'all are researching all that.
But there's, there's some new senate bills, that we as police have to be very careful contacting somebody because of their statute in society. And so, because somebody's homeless is not a reason, I think a thousand dollar contact fine on the agency.
Really?
Yes.
That's profiling?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
And so, we have to be very careful.
Well, thank you for the, all of the information. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Just said, thank you, thanks. Thanks to Gamash too, for letting me know.
Yes.
That's, it was really nice for him to show up, and it was really important to us that he was there, and was helping us with the situation. It's been very informative, having him there and showing us, like I said, showing me some of the camp, encampments that I didn't even know about. So, I've been trying to keep up on this, and he was able to inform me on some of them that I didn't even know about, so, that was good.
Yeah, and he, he is the most knowledgeable, since he's been dealing with it the longest. But up until two thousand fourteen, there was no such position, best practice for that, to have a homeless liaison also. So, that's been good.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
If I could say one more thing now, I saw the nice letter to the editor today about you. Thank you.
I haven't read the paper today. I saw the one yesterday that wasn't.
What's it about?
Not about him, though.
You helped someone with a problem, Nadine Delavita wrote in, I think it was Nadine Delavita.
Is that Nadine?
Uh, that wrote in and wanted to inform the community how helpful you were for this woman to correct the situation, and how patient and kind and pleasant.
For the chief. Oh, great, it's nice to hear good things.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go on to item number twelve. Steve Baker and Rheda Hogan regarding adopt a resolution for the city council, the city of Puerto Rico employment of Willow Martindale, and directing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding such limited term employment, together with any and all other necessary documents.
So, we're probably gonna tag team this, you may recall that we talked about this at our.
Last meeting.
Goal-setting session, and looking for some extra help, and one of the things that I kind of think of this position as, if you excuse the baseball metaphor, in case you're not a baseball fan, is sort of a utility infielder, someone that can play a bunch of different positions.
Right, right.
And so, that's kind of the way that I really look at the, the position and what we need. We need some help, and this is one way to get it. It's a limited term basis, so that's what we're looking at. Rheda could fill you in on some of the details if you would like. I do know that we did talk about this, at that meeting, so, if you have to answer any questions?
Okay.
I was looking at her qualifications on status and activities, and which would be included in that too, and it's, it has a, looks like it has a really good list of activities that she would be doing.
I like the code enforcement part.
That was the first thing I seen, and I was like, good. So, that was a big one right there in itself, code enforcement.
So, so, when it says sixty to eighty, right here? We're not giving away, we're not giving away the upper boundary of their negotiating salary, right?
Yeah, it seemed a little higher to me, too.
Huh?
It's inclusive of the benefits?
Yeah, but why does it say sixty to, sixty-five to eighty?
It depends on the healthcare plan chosen.
Right, so now the guy knows, okay, well, I better, better pick the high-end one, cause they got eighty thousand payment for all these benefits.
What, what you're suggesting is by putting this in the agenda item, that you're reducing the city's negotiating position?
Correct.
That's what I think.
Okay. I think Rheda may have something to do with our negotiating position.
That's a good point.
Other than that, I'm okay.
Yeah. We, we discussed this at the strategic planning, about the importance of getting someone that can help Rheda.
Oh, yeah.
And in order to help Rheda, well, it was actually a split position, between the strategic planning goals, as well as backup for Rheda, right? That it would be, we need someone who's very well qualified.
Right. And it, it really will be broad, we're gonna throw a lot of things. And, and we'll be prioritizing, obviously, among those things, but really is somebody that can fill a lot of different holes.
And it's a one-year position?
Correct.
This was the person you were talking about that you might know? You told us about?
The management team house, Matt, and interviewed this individual, and seemed to think that it might fit some of the needs that we have collectively throughout, and some of those are delivering on the strategic goals that we have. Some of them, I have not gotten to any technology improvement projects for smarter, more efficient government for a while. And we also, the individual has skills in being out with the public and meeting the public, having been an appraiser in Young County. So, just has broad spectrum of skills that we think we could utilize, and would be open, not everyone's open into consideration of a limited term agreement, and of course, we'll be going into a biannual budget, and might assess that there's a need for that.
Okay, one other question, is there anything in place regarding if she doesn't perform as well as expected to release her?
That's why I have the city attorney assisting me on the contract.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We have an off-ramp.
That's right.
As well as an on-ramp. Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Oh, we're so shy.
Since when?
I'll move we adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Puerto Rico employment of Willow Martindale, and directing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding such limited term employment, together with any and all other necessary documents.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to approve as recommended? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. And council member Vachego didn't even have to recuse himself. It's a nice change. More abstain.
Only, what, four times?
All right, now we're down to city manager staff reports.
Yes, mayor members of the council, I just have a couple of brief items. One is to note that we are closed both the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of the month, so, yep. Paul Humbug? So, that's Christmas and Boxing Day.
Monday and Tuesday.
Also, that, just to, the last time that we talked about it, we said, the police building is just about ready to go out to bid, we have just one more thing, or maybe it was one or two or four, whatever. Anyway, those have been, for lack of a better term, swept away, handled, dealt with. And as of Monday of this week, it is out on the street. If you know contractors that would like to work on that project, the bid information is out at the various exchanges, and also, I believe is available on our website, right, or, there's a way to get it. They're contractors, they'll figure it out.
What's the date on there?
Uh, the date is, I believe, January eighteenth. That's why we're looking at a special meeting of the council on the twenty-fifth. We need to check with you in terms of making sure that there's a time that works for everyone on that date. That date could be subject to change in the event that. That date could be subject to change in the event that the bid period needs to be extended. Sometimes when there are really good questions from contractors that require a bid amendment, then sometimes it will get pushed back. But we would like to get it done sooner than later so that we can try to get the contractors to lock in their prices before any pricing increases.
January twenty-fifth?
Correct.
Is that what you said? Okay, there's two things on that date that I can think of. I have a monthly meeting and I think there, isn't there a far safe council monthly meeting on the fourth Thursday, or did they change it?
Ask them.
We don't, we don't know what they did.
Nobody knows. Well, I know I have a meeting, but if we had it earlier, I think that-
If, if, if there's a ti- so, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll get in talk, in contact with you to try to set a time. We could do it on the twenty-fourth, but we would rather do it on the twenty-fifth so that we make sure that there's enough time to, uh, vet the contractors
On the eighteenth.
and come to you. Yeah.
There's also some rather USDA, um, imposed requirements of certification, that they have the authority and so forth. So I would anticipate between the time that they, that we select who may be the low bidder, we're gonna need information from them to prove their authority and that usually entails resolutions and so forth.
Will that take more than a week? Because that's only a week. It might take more.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we'll, we'll figure it out. We just want to put a target date there for you. We do have the, uh, meeting on February one, so-
We could do it then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if we, if we have to back it up a week, we will. And it's just that if we have the opportunity, you know, we're, staff's ready to go now. We've got those bidders out there.
Oh, yeah.
We just need their, we need them to do the work.
That's exciting.
On the go for themselves, so.
Well, I'm excited. I know the chief is.
The notice of mining biz is posted to the city website.
It is? It's posted. All right.
What day? Twenty-fifth?
That's it.
Eighteenth to the eighteenth. Two on the eighteenth, the bill's changed.
It's on the eighteenth, we're not confirmed for the twenty-fifth. We'll see. Maybe, who, who knows, maybe it's Friday night at twenty-sixth. What else good is there to do on a Friday night, right?
You better have pizza.
I could think of that.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Uh, no, I did find out the name of that, uh, board, so the chief doesn't, it is the Board of State and Community Corrections.
There you go. B O C C.
Yeah.
State of state and what?
B S C C.
Board of State and Community Correction.
Of course it is.
So, I'm kind of thinking that I understand why they just give us initials and why we don't remember the name. That's all I have.
I hate acronyms.
Just doesn't sound friendly.
Okay. Alrighty. Uh, let's see, let's start at the other end.
Yeah.
Let's start board reports with you, council member Bachego.
Oh, very well.
Unless they're gonna recuse herself.
So, um, since the last, since our last meeting, um, we had our strategic planning meeting and I thought that went very well. We had a good lively discussion. Um, we had, um, I helped prepare and I know, um, many of you attended the, uh, fire department Christmas dinner.
That's nice.
And that's always a lot of fun to put on.
You cooked? Oh, I didn't know that.
No, no, I cleaned. You ate some hors d'oeuvres. These, these hands touched some of those.
Okay.
And then, um, Dave Lamore, one of our firefighters, actually did a superb job of decorating.
Yes, he did.
He completed the table decorations and the lights. It's like-
He did a nice job.
And he, and he was real proud of himself too. It's like, oh, you guys are gonna like this. I'm thinking, I don't think so. But yeah, it was, he did a great job.
Yep.
And Sunday morning, so I go right from that to Sunday morning Mason's breakfast, which they have for Toys for Tots.
Right.
So Marine Corps league and, uh, and I think that was pretty well attended. Um, I had to actually leave and then catch a flight to San Diego for, for some legal training and then, um, I'm back. That's it.
You got back tonight.
I did get back tonight.
Thank you. We commend you on coming straight from the airport.
Yeah.
Ron?
We went to the firefighter's dinner, which was very nice and, uh, the, uh, YMCA had the ugly sweater run, which was nice and, uh-
Did you run it? You were at that.
Yeah.
Didn't he run it?
I ran it, but I didn't do the course because I went in and when I registered, they told me it's gonna be going to the greenway. And then when I went in to get my number that morning, they actually showed me a map showing it was going to the greenway and turning around at the Oberlin trailhead. So I went and, I went up with the two milers, turned around and then I went and did the rest of it. And I did my five miles. It wasn't the official course, but I actually ran the first race on the greenway. And I think-
Did you run into anybody?
I didn't run into any homeless people.
You thought you were that far ahead, did you?
No, I, I knew I wasn't, uh, in the race because, uh, I wanted to check that out. Like, I don't know what the confusion was, that they showed me a map twenty minutes before and then they changed it.
You never know.
Yeah.
They get it on purpose. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, council member K?
Oh, well, it's been a, a busy couple of weeks, obviously. I've, just in this last week alone, I've attended five meetings for the, for the homeless, um, part of it. It's been an educational, very educational topic.
In seven days' time, you attended five?
Five now.
Ah, okay, you got two days off for good behavior?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that was this weekend so I could work on my shops and step on a rusty nail that I had to go get.
Ouch.
Um, tetanus shot and antibiotics because my foot swelled up. That was lovely. And, but, uh, other, other than that, yeah, it's been good. We've been busy at work. There's a lot of stuff going on. Everybody, the big push, obviously, before Christmas is always the big push that, when it comes to the construction industry, to get cabinets, countertops and all that sort of stuff done before Christmas time.
Blinds.
And this has not been, in one of those years, it's any different, so it's been very busy and chaotic, but it's been good on top of all the homeless stuff going on. We have, like I said, the point in time, it's gonna be, like, like I said earlier, on, on, uh, January twenty-second, we'll actually start doing the count that evening for any homeless shelters or whatnot. The twenty-third is when we'll start going out and about and doing, um, the actual count, physical count. Um, if anybody wants to help, I would love some volunteers because we have a lot of area to cover.
Right.
Um, we're, I'm in charge of the whole Warrick area, coordinating where we're going and what times and who's all going out and doing that. So, um, like I said, if anybody wants to come out and, and hang out and, and, uh, do some counting and talking, then it's great. And then, uh, like I said, January second, we have, before that, we have our board supervisor meeting, which is gonna be a crucial one to try to get them on board with the, with the whole, uh, idea that we're doing, so. We have a lot going on in January, so if our meeting for the, didn't get pushed to February first, that wouldn't hurt my feelings either on that aspect because Jan-, at the end of January, I'm gonna be very busy trying to get this orchestrated, the last count on that. But other than that, it's gonna be a, a good month.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you for all your good work. We appreciate it.
Yes, it's a lot of time.
Yeah, it really is. Debbie?
Okay, I did go to the Liberty Arts, I can't call it an open house, but their art show on, uh, the eighth and that was well attended. They had some really nice and still have the same pieces there. Um, what's his name?
Bill?
Bill Durczik's, uh, projects are all moving things. And one of them, they all have gears and stuff in them, but one of them, to get the last gear to move would take sixteen years. Is that unreal?
Right?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, I was turning and I thought it was broken and it's, it's just that it's got these little teeny tiny things going on, so. But anyway, it's worth going into. It's, it's a nice display. I did do the ugly sweater run first time with, actually the fourth time for me, but first time for my dog. And she actually had a lot of pictures taken.
She made the paper.
Yeah, yeah. She's the chubby little girl in there. I get a lot of pictures of my feet and shoes, so I'm gonna have to upgrade my shoes. The fire department dinner, Christmas dinner was really nice and the guys are really generous and appreciative to council, to being supportive. But that's, that's an easy yes vote for me because if my house burns down, I'm not gonna call my neighbor, you know? So, and I did go to your breakfast the next day afterwards too and it's always really good. Do you guys ever take off a month? So you'll have something next, the third Sunday of every month? Do you know who it's for next time?
Um, I, I should, but I don't. I don't remember.
Okay.
I'm jet lagged.
Okay. Okay, and that's all.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. I'm sorry I missed you in the ugly sweater run, but I know there's lots of pictures, so I'll look for your shoes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so mainly, uh, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everyone, wishing everyone happy holidays. Uh, there's been a lot going on. It's all been mentioned. The strategic planning I thought, uh, was really interesting. That was on December twelfth. I had a tour of the casino on December eighth, which was really interesting. I'm trying to pull together a, a tour for the council as well, um, because Mike Rose, the project manager, said that he would, he would be delighted to do it, so I just need to get some dates. Uh, the Lola meeting, looking forward to the board of supervisors and the Lola meeting, getting more people involved in the point in time survey, um, as well as the homelessness issue. It's a slow process and I know that, that Pastor John Krueger, it's not fast enough for him, but, um, there's, there's a certain way that you have to do things in the documentation to get the funding for the services. So I'm looking forward, uh, to, to getting that accomplished. And mainly just looking forward to finishing out this year and with good, with family and friends and, and, uh, looking forward to twenty eighteen. So Merry Christmas to all.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
I think with that, any other?
Closed session, yeah.
Do we have a closed session?
No closed session tonight.
Okay, closed session tonight is canceled, so.
The notice of mining biz is posted to the city website.
It is? It's posted. All right.
What day? Twenty-fifth?
That's it.
It's not over.
Two on the eighteenth, the bill's changed.
It's on the eighteenth, we're not confirmed for the twenty-fifth. We'll see. Maybe, who, who knows, maybe it's Friday night at twenty-sixth. What else good is there to do on a Friday night, right?
You better have pizza.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Uh, no, I did find out the name of that, uh, board, so the chief doesn't, it is the Board of State and Community Corrections.
There you go. B O C C.
Yeah.
State of state and what?
B S C C.
Board of State and Community Correction.
Of course it is.
So, I'm kind of thinking that I understand why they just give us initials and why we don't remember the name. That's all I have.
I hate acronyms.
Just doesn't sound friendly.
Okay. Alrighty. Uh, let's see, let's start at the other end.
Yeah.
Let's start board reports with you, council member Bachego.
Oh, very well.
Unless they're gonna recuse herself.
So, um, since the last, since our last meeting, um, we had our strategic planning meeting and I thought that went very well. We had a good lively discussion. Um, we had, um, I helped prepare and I know, um, many of you attended the, uh, fire department Christmas dinner.
That's nice.
And that's always a lot of fun to put on.
You cooked? Oh, I didn't know that.
No, no, I cleaned. You ate some hors d'oeuvres. These, these hands touched some of those.
Okay.
And then, um, Dave Lamore, one of our firefighters, actually did a superb job of decorating.
Yes, he did.
He completed the table decorations and the lights. It's like-
He did a nice job.
And he, and he was real proud of himself too. It's like, oh, you guys are gonna like this. I'm thinking, I don't think so. But yeah, it was, he did a great job.
He did a nice job. Yep.
And Sunday morning, so I go right from that to Sunday morning Mason's breakfast, which they have for Toys for Tots.
Right.
So Marine Corps league and, uh, and I think that was pretty well attended. Um, I had to actually leave and then catch a flight to San Diego for, for some legal training and then, um, I'm back. That's it.
You got back tonight.
I did get back tonight.
Thank you. We commend you on coming straight from the airport.
Yeah.
Ron?
We went to the firefighter's dinner, which was very nice and, uh, the, uh, YMCA had the ugly sweater run, which was nice and, uh-
Did you run it? You were at that.
Yeah.
Didn't he run it?
I ran it, but I didn't do the course because I went in and when I registered, they told me it's gonna be going to the greenway. And then when I went in to get my number that morning, they actually showed me a map showing it was going to the greenway and turning around at the Oberlin trailhead. So I went and, I went up with the two milers, turned around and then I went and did the rest of it. And I did my five miles. It wasn't the official course, but I actually ran the first race on the greenway. And I think-
Did you run into anybody?
I didn't run into any homeless people.
You thought you were that far ahead, did you?
No, I, I knew I wasn't, uh, in the race because, uh, I wanted to check that out. Like, I don't know what the confusion was, that they showed me a map twenty minutes before and then they changed it.
You never know.
Yeah.
They get it on purpose. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, council member K?
Oh, well, it's been a, a busy couple of weeks, obviously. I've, just in this last week alone, I've attended five meetings for the, for the homeless, um, part of it. It's been an educational, very educational topic.
In seven days' time, you attended five?
Five now.
Ah, okay, you got two days off for good behavior?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that was this weekend so I could work on my shops and, and step on a rusty nail that I had to go get.
Ouch.
Tetanus shot and antibiotics because my foot swelled up. That was lovely. And, but, uh, other, other than that, yeah, it's been good. We've been busy at work. There's a lot of stuff going on. Everybody, the big push, obviously, before Christmas is always the big push that, when it comes to the construction industry, to get cabinets, countertops and all that sort of stuff done before Christmas time.
Blinds.
And this has not been, in one of those years, it's any different, so it's been very busy and chaotic, but it's been good on top of all the homeless stuff going on. We have, like I said, the point in time, it's gonna be, like, like I said earlier, on, on, uh, January twenty-second, we'll actually start doing the count that evening for any homeless shelters or whatnot. The twenty-third is when we'll start going out and about and doing, um, the actual count, physical count. Um, if anybody wants to help, I would love some volunteers because we have a lot of area to cover.
Right.
Um, we're, I'm in charge of the whole Warrick area, coordinating where we're going and what times and who's all going out and doing that. So, um, like I said, if anybody wants to come out and, and hang out and, and, uh, do some counting and talking, then it's great. And then, uh, like I said, January second, we have, before that, we have our board supervisor meeting, which is gonna be a crucial one to try to get them on board with the, with the whole, uh, idea that we're doing, so. We have a lot going on in January, so if our meeting for the, didn't get pushed to February first, that wouldn't hurt my feelings either on that aspect because Ja-, at the end of January, I'm gonna be very busy trying to get this orchestrated, the last count on that. But other than that, it's gonna be a, a good month.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you for all your good work. We appreciate it.
Yes, it's a lot of time.
Yeah, it really is. Debbie?
Okay, I did go to the Liberty Arts, I can't call it an open house, but their art show on, uh, the eighth and that was well attended. They had some really nice and still have the same pieces there. Um, what's his name?
Bill?
Bill Durczik's, uh, projects are all moving things. And one of them, they all have gears and stuff in them, but one of them, to get the last gear to move would take sixteen years. Is that unreal? Yeah.
Wow.
So, I was turning and I thought it was broken and it's, it's just that it's got these little teeny tiny things going on, so. But anyway, it's worth going into. It's, it's a nice display. I did do the ugly sweater run first time with, actually the fourth time for me, but first time for my dog. And she actually had a lot of pictures taken.
She made the paper.
Yeah, yeah. She's the chubby little girl in there. I get a lot of pictures of my feet and shoes, so I'm gonna have to upgrade my shoes. The fire department dinner, Christmas dinner was really nice and the guys are really generous and appreciative to council, to being supportive. But that's, that's an easy yes vote for me because if my house burns down, I'm not gonna call my neighbor, you know? So, and I did go to your breakfast the next day afterwards too and it's always really good. Do you guys ever take off a month? So you'll have something next, the third Sunday of every month? Do you know who it's for next time?
Um, I, I should, but I don't. I don't remember.
Okay.
I'm jet lagged.
Okay. Okay, and that's all.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. I'm sorry I missed you in the ugly sweater run, but I know there's lots of pictures, so I'll look for your shoes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so mainly, uh, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everyone, wishing everyone happy holidays. Uh, there's been a lot going on. It's all been mentioned. The strategic planning I thought, uh, was really interesting. That was on December twelfth. I had a tour of the casino on December eighth, which was really interesting. I'm trying to pull together a, a tour for the council as well, um, because Mike Rose, the project manager, said that he would, he would be delighted to do it, so I just need to get some dates. Uh, the Lola meeting, looking forward to the board of supervisors and the Lola meeting, getting more people involved in the- point in time survey, as well as the homelessness issue. It's a slow process, and I know that, that Pastor John Krueger, it's not fast enough for him, but there's, there's a certain way that you have to do things in the documentation to get the funding for the services. So I'm looking forward to, to getting that accomplished. And mainly, just looking forward to finishing out this year and with good, with family and friends, and, and looking forward to twenty eighteen. So Merry Christmas to all.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
I think with that, any other?
Close session.
Do we have a close session?
No close session tonight.
Okay, close session tonight is canceled, so.